Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I ask to all visitors, please, clear the floor and retire to their seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I would like to ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Pastor Dorian J. Stevenson, Senior of the Christian Community Baptist Church of Norristown and as a member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, he is here today as the guest of Majority Leader, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
The 118th Psalm in the verse 24 says, "This is the day that the Lord has made." Can you hear me? Perfect. In the 118th Psalm, the Bible reads in the 24th verse, "This is the day that the Lord has made. I will rejoice and be glad in it." I would like to say good morning, first and foremost, and thank you for allowing me to pray before this assembled body. And a special thank you to my Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for inviting me. Let us pray. Gracious and heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus the Christ, thank you, Lord. Thank you this morning for allowing me, your humble servant, to stand with this august body of civic leaders. And I'm aware that this esteemed group of leaders will be discussing many important matters. So I ask that you prepare their hearts so that you can get the glory from their decision-making today. And I plead on their behalf for your support and your wisdom and your love to manifest throughout this entire chamber. I pray that everyone here will govern with a Christ-like character, full of love and compassion, free of corruption, from scandal, free from selfishness, free from greed. Please, dear Lord, bless everyone here today under the sound of my voice. Bless them in a mighty way. If they know you are not, show them a heavy measure of favor, grace, and mercy upon their lives. And as I exalt you, you exalt them in order for them to complete their assignment of making the lives of their constituents just a bit better and easier today than it was on yesterday. Now unto him who was able to keep us from falling and to present us faultless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy, to the only wise God, our Savior, be both glory and majesty, dominion and power, both now and forevermore. And let the redeemed say so. Amen.
The chair thanks the pastor for the invocation. Council will now be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 1st, 2025. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 1st, 2025, be approved.
It has been moved in propriety secondly that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 1st, 2025, stand approved. All in favor will indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence. The chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Thank you. On behalf of the majority, there is a request for leave of absence for Councilmember Mark Squilla and Councilmember Brian O'Neal.
The chair thanks the Councilmember and leave is granted. The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
For the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Councilmember. The chair now recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in propriety secondly that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda. For today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning on behalf of all members of City Council. I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. I want to take a moment to acknowledge one of my guests who are joining me are students who used to attend the Chester A. Arthur School and decided to rename the school through advocacy, speaking truth to power. And the new name of the school is the Marian Anderson Neighborhood Academy. They are the eighth grade social studies class, and they're here with their teacher, Ms. Gianna McCanney, and they're in the balcony. Can they all stand, and let's give them a round of applause for their advocacy and their hard work? We thank our young people for speaking truth to power and names matter. The chair recognizes Councilmember Katty Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I'd also like to welcome some students from my district, students from Gloria Casares, students from Esperanza, students from Conwell, and students from Willard. Welcome.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. I just wanted to welcome a few of my guests today. First and foremost, we'll be honoring and recognizing one of the teachers. I'm sorry. We'll be recognizing Sister Njamele Anderson, who has been named the Philadelphia Citizen 2025 Educator of the Year. Can you stand up, please? Secondly, Council President, we'll be recognizing three young people from Palumbo High School who, I don't know for a fact, but these three young people, we think, are the first time that we've seen three students from our city, our public schools, all become Gates Millennial Scholarship winners. Right? And the three young people are Denisea, Brandon, and George. Again, if you don't know, the Gates Millennial Scholarship is a scholarship that pays for your entire academic journey until you decide you want to stop learning. And again, three people with one school winning it. So congratulations. Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Thomas. And the chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, we have 60 students from...
Council be at ease.
I just want to acknowledge that we have 60 students from Linglebach School in Mount Erie today to take a glimpse on how government works. They're in the process of getting in, but I just wanted to take the moment to recognize some of the students as a former worker at Linglebach Elementary. I'm so excited to have them here with us today.
Can they stand, please?
They still didn't get in the building yet, but I just wanted to give them...
At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll, who will present a resolution, recognize the month of May, 2025, as Building Safety Month in the city of Philadelphia with LNI Commissioner Bridget Greenwald and Basil Miranda. And those accompanying them, please join the Councilmember at the podium. Joining Member Driscoll, that's Commissioner Basil Miranda. Joining Councilmember Driscoll is Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Jamie Garcia. Councilmember Anthony Phillips. Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke. The chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll. Chairman of the License and Inspection...
Thank you, Mr. President. We're recognizing May, 2025, as Building Safety Month in the city of Philadelphia. And joining us today are Commissioner Basil Miranda and Commissioner...
Excuse me, Member Driscoll. Let the council be at ease for a second. Listen, I know we have a lot of guests that are here today, and we welcome you to City Council. We're asking, can you please keep your voices down while we conduct the business of our legislative agenda for today? And if you feel the need to have a conversation, that's okay, but please step outside the council chambers. And that's if you're in the balcony, as well as if you're here on the floor. The chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Mr. President, we have Commissioner Basil Miranda, and we have Commissioner Bridget Collins-Greenwald here. And as you can see, I think we have the entire staff of License and Inspection here. What's making me nervous is who the hell's watching the buildings today? That's what I worry about. I'm joking, because I know your team watches these buildings 24/7, 365 days a year. Believe me when I tell you that. I've been on the phone on Christmas Day with some of the staff at LNI. I've been on the phone on the Fourth of July. I've been on the phone at 2:00 in the morning. They've been out with me when a plane crashes in northeast Philadelphia. You know, we always talk about our first responders. Well, guess what? LNI are first responders and well, so let's give them a round of applause. And as the chair of LNI Committee here in City Council and on behalf of all of my colleagues, and some of my colleagues are going to have some comments during the resolution and the citation, we just want every member of this department, for every level of your department, to know how grateful we are on what you folks do every single day to keep us safe in the city of Philadelphia. And we mean that as an entire council, as council president, and I think I can speak on behalf of Mayor Parker today, that we want to thank each and every one of you for your service, your public commitment, and your dedication. So with that, we're going to begin to present the citation, and then we'll hear from your leadership. Whereas, the city of Philadelphia is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential roles of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And?
And we thank you, our Chairman of Licenses and Inspections, for this opportunity to show our appreciation and gratitude to all the members of Licenses and Inspections for all of your hard work throughout the entire city of Philadelphia. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And? Whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And?
Whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Whereas, game on, the theme for Building Safety Month 2025 encourages all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and a global scale. And?
Whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, tribal, territorial, and federal building safety and fire prevention departments in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore be it. Be it resolved that the Council of the city of Philadelphia hereby recognizes the month of May as 2025 Building Safety Month. Further resolved that an engrossed resolution be presented to Bridget Collins-Greenwald and Basil Miranda in recognition of the vital work done by the Department of Licenses and Inspections.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Bridget Greenwald and then Basil Miranda Commissioner for remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Driscoll and City Council for your unwavering support of both departments of LNI and recognizing the dedication of the employees of the Quality of Life and the Inspection Safety and Compliance Department during Building Safety Month. The theme of this year, as you noted, was building is game on, and we look forward to a month full of activities and trainings that will communicate the importance of safety in their existing and yet-to-be-built buildings. The teams on both sides of LNI hold safety as the utmost priority and have heeded the very special calling to ensure the safety of the residents and visitors throughout the city through tireless code education and enforcement. I am proud to work with the folks in this room. I'm proud for those who are not here as well. They show such altruism to make this city a safer place. Thank you.
I would like to thank Council President Johnson, Councilmember and Chairman of the LNI Committee, Councilmember Driscoll, and the entire City Council for recognizing and acknowledging Building Safety Month. On behalf of LNI's Inspection, Safety, and Compliance Division, I accept this resolution with gratitude and appreciation. LNI's construction inspectors, plans examiners, clerical staff are on the front lines enforcing the building codes and standards day in and day out, ensuring construction craftsmanship in every neighborhood of the city. It's tough, hard work that they do with skill, professionalism, and effectiveness. So this resolution is indeed a well-deserved pat on the back for our folks. We look forward to continuing our excellent working partnership with the council, and thank you again for your resolution.
Council be at ease.
They were able to put together not just a legendary season this year, but if you look at the past three years, on top of the accomplishment of one player who I'm not going to talk about too much...
I can say three?
Yeah. I'm repeating that, three years.
Oh, I'm sorry. On top of the accomplishment of one player who just happened to score a lot of points, we're not going to talk about that right now. It's an amazing honor to be here with you all, to congratulate you. Not just as a member of City Council, but also as a board member of PIAA District 12. You guys represent the city. You represent District 12, and we're extremely proud of you. So with that being said, congratulate... We are here today to honor Ordery High School and congratulating Ordery High School Varsity Girls Basketball Team for their historic three-peat as the 2025 Public League Champions. Whereas, on February 23rd, 2025, the Universal Ordery High School Lady Rocket secured their third consecutive Public League Championship when they beat MOTep Lady Panthers 62-52. And?
Whereas, this historic achievement is a testament to the Lady Rocket's exceptional skill, teamwork, and determination, as well as the unwavering commitment of their coaches and support staff. And?
Whereas, head coach Kevin Slaughter played a pivotal role in guiding the team to success, instilling discipline, strategic excellence, and a winning mentality. And?
Whereas senior guard Shayla Smith denestrated, outstanding leadership contributing significantly to the team's triumph with her precision shooting and composure under pressure. And?
Whereas the championship victory was especially meaningful following an intense season, including a narrow 67-64 loss to MOTep on January 22nd during the three-game losing streak, and whereas the Lady Rockets displayed remarkable perseverance in the championship game, making strategic adjustments in the second half to pull ahead and secure a 12-point lead. And?
Whereas the Lady Rockets are using the momentum from this victory to help carry them to the state championship. Girl power!
Whereas this legislative body is in full support of the Lady Rockets and their continued pursuit of excellence. Now, therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby congratulates Orton Reed High School's Varsity Girls Basketball Team for their historic three-peat as 2025 Public League Champions. Let's give them a round of applause.
Council President, we want to say thank you for your leadership and your advocacy for everything South Philadelphia, but especially your advocacy for this particular program, and also say thank you to the amazing Fatima Gamble, who is here today to join us in council with Orton Reed. Thank you, Council President.
And before I call up Coach Slaughter to give remarks, yes, I want to acknowledge the founder of Universal Schools, Ms. Fatima Gamble. Let's give her a round of applause. The CEO, Dr. Penny Nixon, give her a round of applause. To the super advocate of all things Universal Schools, Devin Allen, who's hiding off to the side, just want to acknowledge him for his hard work and his dedication. And before we call up the coach, you know, it's a team sport, but there's also an MVP by the name of Shayla Smith, who's the all-time leading scorer, who shattered the city record with 2,502 career points. That's for boys and girls, if I stand correct. Oh, okay. Okay, well, let's get 2691. Okay, they said, I stand correct. I ain't going to lowball you, Shayla. 2691, and does that include girls and boys' points? Listen, everyone.
That means she beat Will Chamberlain.
That means she beat Will Chamberlain, guys and girls, more points than both. Let's give it a round of applause. The Chair recognizes Coach Slaughter.
Hello, everyone. How y'all doing? On behalf of Universal Orton Reed Charter School, Principal Anderson, A.D., Ms. Moses, my coaching staff, and our basketball team, we would like to thank Ms. Gamble for being here, for one, and thank Ms. Penny Nixon for always supporting us and being here. Mr. Kenyatta Johnson, I've known him for over 30 years, so I'm like really proud of him, just like he says he's proud of me, and I'd like to thank him and the councilman body just for having us and recognizing us today. It's a big accomplishment, and I'm very honored. I can't say enough about this program that started on March 2013 when I was hired. I remember telling people that we were going to change the culture. It wasn't going to be the same Orton Reed from 30 years ago, and the kids that I had behind me, they just, they listened to everything I said, and we just took it to another level, and we plan on doing it another five or 10 more years if possible, and hopefully we could be here in front of you guys a couple more times. Thank you.
Councilor Beatty. Communications, the Chair requested that Sergeant Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May 5th, I sign the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on May 1st, 2025. Bill number 250204, 250205, and 250206. And that on May 7th, I sign the following bills, which were passed by Council at its session on April 24th, 2025. Bill number 250102, 250148, 250176, 250177, 250203, 250208, 250209, 250240, 250241, 250271, 250272, and 250274. And to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled "The Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code" by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Plumbing Code as published by the International Code Council, including introduction of new amendments and maintenance of previously adopted amendments to the 2018 International Plumbing Code as adopted under the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Energy Authority to purchase electricity and certain attributes and benefits related to the generation of such electricity from Abe's Run Solar LLC for use in connection with city facilities, all under certain terms and conditions. An ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Designation of Bicycle Lanes" to authorize a bicycle lane on South 59th Street from Market Street to Baltimore Avenue, and the removal of a travel lane within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions. An ordinance author-
Check this out. Now, I'm extremely nice and fair, but if we don't comment down, I'm gonna ask Sergeant Arms to start asking people to be removed out of the chambers, because I can't hear up here. Y'all probably think I can, but we can't both do this at the same time. So if you're here to observe the proceedings, then I'm asking you to be quiet. Chief Clerk, please proceed.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation and the Commissioner of Procurement on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a multi-year concession agreement with German American Marketing, Inc. at Christmas Village in Philadelphia for the operation and management of the seasonal Christmas Village for the City of Philadelphia at Love Park and other potential city-owned areas. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the development of a mixed-use condominium and health center facility premises located on Frankfurt Avenue in the vicinity of Pratt Street and Dyer Street owned by the FCDC Development Properties 1 LLC or an affiliated entity, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a long-term lease or sublease agreement for the occupancy and operation of the health center facility on said premises, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple Title II or a lesser interest in the completed health center facility, including a condominium unit, or to facilitate the transfer of title in the completed health center facility, including a condominium unit, to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development or the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for the benefit of the city, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee title or a lesser interest in real estate located on East Roosevelt Boulevard in the vicinity of Langdon Street, known as Friends Campus, for the development, occupancy, and operation of a health center, and enter into related agreements, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled "The Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code" by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code and the International Residential Code, Part IV, Energy Conservation, as published by the International Code Council, with previously adopted amendments thereto as authorized by the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, all under certain terms and conditions. Council President, there are no further communications in my possession.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution for introduction today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the life and legacy of Congressman Dwight Evans on the occasion of his 71st birthday and declaring May 16th, 2025 as Dwight Evans' Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Captain Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer one privileged resolution and two bills on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
An ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Energy Authority to purchase electricity and certain attributes and benefits related to the generation of such electricity from Abe's Run Solar LLC for use in connection with city facilities, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the property bounded by Cops Creek, 75th Street Extended, Buyst Avenue, and 78th Street, and owned by the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, the Philadelphia Land Bank, or the Philadelphia Housing and Development Corporation, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring journalist Chuck Stone for his posthumous special citation for the Pulitzer Prize Board for his role as the Philadelphia Daily News' first Black columnist, his charity-based coverage of the civil rights movement, and his position as co-founder of the National Association of Black Journalists.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have two bills for introduction.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance authorizing improvements in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 4248 Spru Street, Philadelphia, PA 19104, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Designation of Bicycle Lanes" to authorize a bicycle lane on South 59th Street from Market Street to Baltimore Avenue, and the removal of a travel lane within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning again, Council President. I have three resolutions today.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution celebrating May 5th to 9th, 2024-2025, as Black Teenager Appreciation Week in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And honoring and congratulating, a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating George Lane, Brandon Chu, and Denisea George for the prestigious honor of receiving the Gates Scholarship, a distinguished recognition that is awarded to 300 students every year out of nearly 100,000.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Nijmila Tamala Anderson for over 20 years of teaching and being named Philadelphia Citizen 2025 Educator of the Year.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Designation of Bicycle Lanes" to authorize a bicycle lane on Port Royal Avenue from Ridge Avenue to Henry Avenue, and removal of a parking lane within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Streets" by enacting a new section requiring the street address to be displayed upon the curb of certain properties, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President, everybody here. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ketya Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer two privileged resolutions, two non-privileged resolutions, and two bills.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for the development of a mixed-use condominium and health center facility on the premises located at Frankfurt Avenue in the vicinity of Pratt Street and Dyer Street owned by FCDC Development Properties 1 LLC or an affiliated entity, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a long-term lease or sublease agreement for the occupancy and operation of the health center facility on said premises, and authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple Title II or a lesser interest in the completed health center facility, including a condominium unit, or to facilitate the transfer of title in the completed health center facility, including a condominium unit, to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development or the Municipal Authority for the benefit of the city, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee title or a lesser interest in real estate located on East Roosevelt Boulevard in the vicinity of Langdon Street, known as Friends Campus, for the development, occupancy, and operation of a health center, and enter into related agreements, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the 4,700 block of Rising Sun Avenue between Wyoming and Masher Street to Officer Laritha A. Verdway in honor of her bravery, sacrifice, and dedication to public service.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the Wissonoming Recreation Center to the Margaret Tartaglion Recreation Center to honor the life legacy of Margaret March Tartaglion, a pioneering public servant and leader in Philadelphia politics.
That's a good one. This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilman-
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Kensington to hold a hearing to examine how chronic trauma from exposure to the opioid crisis impacts children's emotional, mental, and behavioral health in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia, and to explore tools, services, and programs to support these youth.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, congratulating, and celebrating the Clara Barton School on the distinguished occasion of its 100-year anniversary commemorating a century of early childhood academic excellence.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair now recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer three bills and one privileged resolution, excuse me.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation and the Commissioner of Procurement on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a multi-year concession agreement with German American Marketing, Inc. Christmas Village in Philadelphia for the operation and management of a seasonal Christmas Village for the City of Philadelphia at Love Park and other potential city-owned areas.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and for the record- This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and for the record, City Hall is located in the 5th Councilmatic District. The Chair recognizes Chief Clerk.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, 9th Street, Erie Avenue, and Broad Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 126 by relocating the Eastardley House Line of Dover Street and the Westardley House Line of Newkirk Street, each from York Street to Cumberland Street, thereby widening said Dover Street and Newkirk Streets, under certain terms and conditions, including the dedication to the City of Beds of the widened portions of said Dover Street and Newkirk Street.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Stephen J. Harmelin Esquire.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Kendra Brooks.
I have no bills or resolutions to introduce today. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, my brother. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution declaring the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you. I have one privileged resolution to introduce.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Reverend Gus Roman, a faithful servant of both the gospel and the people, for his legacy of uplifting Philadelphians and for his unwavering commitment to civil rights locally and abroad.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I have two bills to offer today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending Section 14-500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts to add an overlay district pertaining to the activity of mobile service units all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 9-1000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Trades and amending Title IV, the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, Subcode P of the Philadelphia Code, entitled the Philadelphia Plumbing Code, to add provisions related to the creation and administration of the master plumber and journeyman plumber examinations.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the property known as 1822 through 1830 West Cayuga Street all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 423 through 27, 429 through 39, including 429 through 39 rear, East Ashmead Street, 226, 260, 278, and 313, AKA 313 through 15, East Springer Street, 49 East Earlham Street, 4635 Germantown Avenue, 30 Good Street, 5608, 5618, 5619, 5642, 5669 High School Street, 4946 Kaiser Street, 5514, 5515, 5642 Morton Street, 6672, 6674 Musgrave Street, 53 East Pastoria Street, 207 East Penn Street, 248 East Philalena Street, 42 and 44 Rieger Street, 35 East Seymour Street, 227, 261, 263 East Sharpenex Street, 218, 326, 342, 343 Shadaker Street, 4951, 4957, 4961, and 4975 Sheldon Street, 111 and 112 East Springer Street, and 4925 and 5222 Wakefield Street located in the 8th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1520 through 40 Vanango Street and 1600 through 20 Vanango Street located in the 8th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina My.
Thank you, Council President. I have three privileged resolutions today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution proclaiming May 2025 as National Tennis Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing May 2025 as ALS Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution proclaiming May 2025 to be American Stroke Month in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business, as there are no reports from committees, is the consideration of the calendar. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilmember and Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 250428, 250429, 250447, 250448, 250451, 250065, 240581, 240750, 250067, 250068, 250149, 250323, 240665-A, 250123, and 250151. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: 250303, 250444, 250461, 250266, and 250267.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. Under ideal circumstances, public commentators each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. This time limit due to the serial repetitious comments on various pieces of resolutions today will be one minute. In order to be fair to all those speaking, I tend to hold faithfully to the one-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on a podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to please conclude your remarks. Once one minute has passed, the light will turn red and the Sergeant Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that time, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not all those done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of city council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I would now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the title of our first speaker.
Father Ryan. May Sister Mary, Teresa Phayo, Erica Green, Andrickson De Leon, and Kate Perez also make their way to the podium. We have Father Ryan, Sister Mary, Teresa Phayo, Erica Green, Andrickson De Leon, and Kate Perez.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jonathan Lai. I'm taking the place of Father today. We're testifying on bills 250266 and 250267. Additionally, my family is located on 47th Street. We're representing Fuwa Mini Market as well as Vietnam Cafe. Now, these businesses aren't just located in the neighborhood. We are residents of that neighborhood, and my brother and I are actually third-generation residents as well. Essentially, it boils down to this, right? Our establishments are more than just businesses. They are vital community pillars. Fuwa and Vietnam Cafe provide service but also a sense of continuity and heritage in a rapidly changing area. Now, changing 47th Street to that one-way street would significantly have negative impacts on our businesses, including accessibility with customers and suppliers, congestion on neighboring streets, and challenges for local residents. Now, I understand that there were some meetings brought up in the neighborhood, but essentially the sense of community really just has been lost here. Our businesses are going to be impacted from that. The neighborhood's going to be impacted from that, and... Amazing.
Good morning, Council President and Council members. Vision Zero's goal is to create low-stress, low-risk bike boulevards, but too often these projects shift the burden of stress onto others, including schools, senior citizens, small businesses, and low-income communities. The proposed protected bike lane on 47th Street will reroute southbound traffic into King Sessing, a community already dealing with congestion. After residents raised concerns, they were excluded from further public engagement, highlighting whose voices got prioritized. At St. Francis de Sales School, staff are already struggling to protect students and seniors from high-speed electric bikes and scooters that routinely ignore traffic laws. This situation will only worsen if this lane is built. Nearly 88 to 100 seniors navigate curbs and shuttles at the Star Harbor Senior Center. Each day, they've had near misses with cyclists who don't stop for red lights or yield to parat transit vans. Many in our elderly community also oppose this plan, especially since parallel roads already have bike lanes. Otis' response last week to the loss of 30 to 40 parking spots at the school is to ticket the parents and teachers. Their plan to push school parking into a nearby business lot.
Good morning and respect to everyone. I'm Ms. Green, Principal at Conwell Middle Magnet School, and I believe in the words of Dr. Connie E. Clayton, "Former Superintendent of Schools, Do What Is Right, Fair, and Just For the Kids." Every message that I have is always about that. So, good morning again. Conwell Middle Magnet School is located in the heart of Kensington and the heart of the opioid crisis. It is an open-air drug market, and it is unacceptable that any child attend there. Conwell was once in a thriving community and neighborhood full of businesses, churches, and families that were proud to live there, and they still are despite everything that was going on. They worked there, still in pride despite everything that's going on. They have been a part of this community, but over the past two decades, we have witnessed a steady decline marked by addiction, violence, tragedy. Our children, elementary school students, middle and high school, they deserve better, and we're counting on all of you. They are walking to school. They are dodging bullets. They are dodging people struggling with addiction. Unacceptable. Do what is right and fair for the children. We cannot harm them. You cannot look at kids and think that this is okay. It is not. Katsi Lozada has been a fierce advocate. It is not okay!
Hello, my name is Andrickson. I am a fifth grader from Gloria Casares Elementary. I am here to speak in support of Bill 240665AA. Each day when I walk to school, I see people pass out near the corner store. Some of them look like they need medical attention. I feel bad for the people because it looks like they didn't have a good life or a good, get a good education. They shouldn't be rotting in the streets, especially where I live and go to school. I feel scared when people who look like zombies get close to me because I feel like they want to hurt me. It would be good if the people in my neighborhood could get services to help them away from my home and school. Can you add mobile services for them? Thank you.
We also have Delilah Garcia, Khalil Davis, Sophia Yadianis, Mateo Sanchez, and Jevaya Robinson.
Hi, my name is Delilah. I'm a fourth grader from Gloria Casares, here to speak in support of Bill Number 240665AA. I believe that no one should be able to throw anything they use on the streets. When I walk to and from school, I see trash all over our streets, and it's not just that. I also see glass, needles, and other things that make our neighborhood unsafe and dirty. Everyone and every family deserves to feel safe. I don't feel comfortable witnessing people using drugs or receiving medical attention in my neighborhood. I think there should be a specific building or place where medical services could be provided away from academic learning and homes. We want kids to be able to enjoy their lives and be able to play outside. We want to enjoy the fresh air. Because of the lack of safety, most kids only use electronics. We want to live safe and careful, not scared and careless. Thank you.
Take your time. You only have one minute. You only have one minute.
All right, so you got to start. Okay.
You can start.
My name is Khalil. I am a fifth grade student at Gloria Casares, speaking in support of Bill Number 240665AA. When I walk to school, I see containers of needles. Sometimes they aren't in the container and around the floor for me to step over. I am disturbed when I see large groups of people getting medical attention in front of a parking lot. I always see them there down the block from my house. It makes me feel scared to see this. Seeing this daily makes me uncomfortable when I am at school trying to ignore it, but that doesn't work. I want people to receive medical services in a place that is not near my home or school. Thank you.
My name is Christopher. My name is Christopher, and I am a fifth grader from Gloria Casares Elementary School. I am a support in helping people with medical needs with the Bill of 240665AA. This bill will help people with addictions and get them help to protect kids and families. When I walk to school, I see many people that are not moving and need medical help. I'm just a kid. I want to go outside and feel like I'm safe. Let us have our childhoods. You can't take that from us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jevaya. I'm a fifth grader from Gloria Casares Elementary. I am here to speak in support of Bill Number 240665AA. Every day I see drug dealers when I'm going to and from school. All day long, cars stop in front of my house, and the drug dealers get money. I don't want to see that, so we decided to come, to come here to help you. We want to tell you what is right and what is wrong. It's wrong for medical services for people in addition to be located near schools and houses like mine. It's right to vote for Councilwoman Katsi Lozada Bill.
We also have Mateo Sanchez, Jevaya Robinson. May Kate Perez, Ms. Nijmle Anderson, and George Lane also make their way to the podium?
Our city council has been playing powerless during the past two years of a livestream Holocaust carried out by our sister city and still actively refusing to take tangible action in stopping the transfer of weapons from leaving our ports. Police act with impunity, but especially in Philadelphia when they know most of their firings are overturned, and they'll still get a pay raise as the commissioner is bragging that their teams are talented at escalating situations like the recent brutalization of Swarthmore students protesting their university's financial aiding and abetting in Zionist war crimes. Political prisoner Mamiya has a talk show behind bars uplifting the play of the Palestinian and connecting our struggles as our oppressors trade and collaborate with each other. The police built the bomb and dropped it on our citizens. After maintaining a blockade on the block for a year preventing people from bringing food into their own homes, today marks 67 days of complete blockade where civilians are starving to death. We have people in Philadelphia traveling to the West Bank to report war crimes. How are we going to prevent our bombs from dropping on our citizens? This Monday, the Israeli government announced they don't want the hostages, they want the land, and will be pushing Palestinians into one concentration camp. NADA in North Gaza is asking you to stop sending them more weapons. Last night, last Thursday, they bombed the flotilla in humanitarian, carrying humanitarian aid in international waters. Seventy percent of all burned victims in Gaza are children. Seventy percent of all burn victims in Gaza are children.
Good morning. I just want to thank council. I want to thank Isaiah Thomas for recognizing me with this resolution today. There is no greater vocation than being a teacher. And there is no job that is the most disrespected than being a teacher. Every day, we're in our classrooms, and we are teaching the generation that's going to take care of us when our hair fall out and our teeth are on the floor. But our position is not respected, and there's nothing sexy about being a teacher the way it is presented, not even talking about money, but just the idea that you can put anybody in front of these precious gems that you have sacrificed your life for as parents, that you love and that you care about. My shirt says "Linked Destinies: Teachers and Students" because if you don't see that your destiny is linked to the child in front of you, then you need to reconsider what you're doing in education. Thank you.
We have George Lane. We have George Lane, May Jose Rivera, Susan Fasulo, Adriana George, Mitch Hairwood, Hairwood, John Goodwin, Jeremy Bladstein, and Ray Alvarez also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, Council President and good morning, City Council. On behalf of the other two gay scholars, we just want to thank City Council for recognizing us and just thank God for putting us in this position and being able to have this scholarship. This scholarship is so rare, and we had the ability to go to school for free and live out our dreams. And we're all going on pre-med majors and hoping to be the next future doctors in our society. I also want to thank my villagers that made me. A lot of people can say they self-made, but along my journey, I have received advice and received mentorship from people all along my journey, even with Councilman Curtis Jones, Councilman Thomas, Council President, Councilman Nicholas O'Rourke, Councilman Mark Phillips. I meant Anthony Phillips, my bad. And just with everything, thank you, Council, and have a good day.
Hello, members of City Council. My name's Jeremy Bladstein. Hate has no place in Philadelphia. I come here every week because I believe in the city and because I want it to be a place where everyone feels safe and welcome. But over the past year and a half, the Jewish community has not felt your support, at least not where it matters most, in public. This past Saturday night at Barstool Sansom Street, Mo Khan thought it would be an edgy joke to have a bottle service sign that said "F the Jews."
Mr. Bladstein.
That happened in Center City, Philadelphia.
Can you tie it into the bicycle lane and then talk about this?
No, this is about related to Josh Shapiro's bill from last week. I didn't have a chance to comment on it. I apologize.
Go ahead, tie it in.
Thank you. Imagine how it feels to walk through this city as a Jewish resident and see so few of our elected leaders speak out. Not a tweet, not a statement, not a resolution, just silence. Let me be clear, silence is not neutrality. Silence is complicity. When hate targets any group, we expect our leaders to respond, not just behind closed doors, not just when it's convenient, but publicly, clearly, and consistently. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for equal treatment. The same energy brought to fighting racism is slantophobia, and all forms of hate must also be brought to fighting antisemitism.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The Jewish community is your community, and today, we are asking you to show up and speak out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ride the ride.
We have Jose Rivera, Susan Fasulo, Adriana George, Mitch Hairwood, John Goodwin, Ray Alvarez.
Thank you. I want to thank the president and the council, and also my council lady and the community that's working behind her a hundred percent. Yes, we need a change for health reasons because if we don't have health, we don't have nothing. We need to improve and clean up our community, and we have to come to a conclusion and say enough is enough. Let's do the right thing. Let's unite and make things happen. That's the only way we can do it. In living here in Philadelphia for over sixty years, I've seen a lot of things in Philadelphia. I've seen the good and bad, and I want to see it better. Thank you so much.
Please state your name for the record before you give your testimony, please.
My name is Raymond Alvarez. I'm the CEO of La Liga del Barrio, a youth basketball league that has served over eighteen-thousand children and families in Philadelphia, especially in the Kensington area in the Seventh District. I'm here today with strong support for Bill Number 240665. On behalf of our youth and the families who currently live in the affected areas or who were forced to leave their homes because of this devastating opioid crisis, our kids deserve safe sidewalks and clean blocks, not corners crowded with needles, discarded paraphernalia, or trauma of public suffering. They deserve to walk to school, to the park, or to practice without fear or exposure to unsafe, unregulated mobile services. The bill does not criminalize care. It brings order to chaos. It ensures that those providing services in our neighborhoods do so with proper equipment, medical oversight, and respect the dignity of families who call these streets home. We support compassionate outreach, but compassionate must be coupled with accountability. The legislation protects both. To be clear, our families are not anti-help. They are anti-harm. And right now, the unregulated environment surrounding mobile services providers is hurting the very people it claims to help. Thank you.
My name is Adriana George, and I'm an organizer for the National Domestic Workers Alliance and Wee Drum and Black Philadelphia Chapter. I am here today to reiterate my support for the Power Act. On a regular basis, I've seen workers who are too afraid of retaliation, especially getting fired or involving authorities like ICE to ask for what is due to them. I have also seen how immigrants have become scapegoat for any social ills in this country, and I hope that Philadelphia does not continue that trend and instead proclaims that immigrant workers and US-born workers can stand hand in hand in solidarity, fighting to make all of our workplaces safe. We are domestic workers who are fighting for the rights of the cashier at your local grocery store, the teenager at the fast-food place, and the immigrant worker at the hip restaurant. All workers deserve respect, and all workers deserve more power in our city. This is why I'm standing behind Councilmember Kendra Brooks, who introduced the Power Act. She listens to workers' needs and work in color. Thank you, Ms. Brooks, and I hope you all vote yes today.
Good morning. My name is Mitch, and I'm a domestic worker in Philadelphia for twenty-seven years. I'm proud of the care provided for families throughout my career. Today, I'm here to speak in support of the Power Act because workers deserve to feel safe and secure in the workplace, and I'm excited knowing that this law will provide an extra layer of protection for workers. But workers like myself also lack value, respect, and dignity in our workplace. I've seen and experienced firsthand how retaliation plays out when domestic workers stand up for their rights. It's a common widespread problem in Philadelphia. It's time for Philadelphia to enforce labor laws properly and provide a resource necessary to protect the sixteen-thousand domestic workers and the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand workers in the Philadelphia city. This is why I'm urging the City Council to pass the Power Act and fully fund the Office of Worker Protection with $3.1 million so that the agency can have a resource necessary to fulfill and implement this law. Thank you.
May we have Luis Hincapi, Sandra Downey, Sonia Bingham, Kristin Ostendorf, Andre Galob, James Washington, and Courtney Richardson also make their way to the podium.
Hi, good morning. Name is Sandra, and I'm originally from Jamaica. I've lived in the West Oak area of Philadelphia for eighteen years, and I've been an home care worker and a house cleaner for the past fifteen years. And I'm a proud member of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I'm here to act as to vote yes for the Power Act in the name of domestic workers and in the name of other marginal workers who made the city run. Too often, we as domestic workers are faced with retaliation in the workplace, and when they take a stand for their rights, we told employers being held accountable. Passing the Power Act provides a clear path, and the government needs to follow to hold bad actors, employers accountable, and we gain stronger protection for all workers in Philadelphia. Passing the Power Act says to workers that Philadelphia is a place that empowers workers to come forward, they experience abuse in their workplace, knowing that they have the government that supports them. This makes the city so much safer and stronger and a place where workers can strive. By the Department of Labor with $3.1 million for the Office of Worker's Protection, meaning that the City Council takes enforcement of rights and protection for the city of Philadelphia seriously. Thank you.
My name is John Goodwin. I'm the owner of the K&amp;A Boxing Gym in Kensington. I'm here in support of the Locatus Bill 240665. I deal with it every day. I only got a minute, so I deal with it every day. I keep Narcon on my gate, three things of Narcon they drop off because I'm out there every day when I'm training the fighters, young kids, constant ODs, food giveaways outside, rats. I can go on and on and on, the problems I have there. And when I seen this bill, I had to come down here to see, because this is a really good bill that will protect the neighbors. Know that the neighbors want that giveaway, food giveaway or stuff like that, but the attics that just fall out constantly. I'm outside bringing them back together, and I can go on and on and on. I have nothing written down, so it's a big problem, a big problem. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kristin Ostendorf. I'm a priest in the Episcopal Diocese of Pennsylvania, and I'm a member of the Claire Project. We provide compassionate outreach on the streets of Kensington and offer medical and rehab referrals when we are able to and when they are requested. We share the concerns that many of the residents of Kensington, and thank you to our young friends who spoke up with their courage, we share those concerns. However, the bill as written will not address them. A recent incident that happened just this week where we were administering Narcan to a man who was clearly in the last stages of an overdose, suffering from agonal breathing demonstrates that. The police arrived, they beeped their horns, they wanted us to move along. We had to ask them to call 911 for this man. They did not ask any questions about where this man got his substances. They did not do anything to investigate the criminal activity that was going along. All they wanted us to do was move along. Let's work together. Let's find a solution that has mercy and compassion and hope. Good faith people can disagree on policy, but this policy is not the right one. Thank you.
Luis Hincapi, I'm here in support of Bill 240665. I've been in the medical field for twenty-seven years in the district, and I believe this is a wonderful opportunity for us to do the right thing. There are infirmed, sick people that need this mobile service. However, you heard the children. There are children with brains that are just developing and are ingrained with images that they should not see. Now, we have the ability as adults to do the right thing. What is the right thing? Let's use this bill to take this great service, put it in a contained area where we don't have to teach our children that filth is the norm. It's not the norm. You know, when I leave Philadelphia, the two things that I hear from non-Philadelphians is, oh, filth and homicides. Come on, guys. Let's do the right thing. Let's let the people that need this mobile services get the service, but let's not have filth.
May Benardita Rivera, Lilia Olivera, Rosa Ortiz, Nancy Negron, Hector Ayala, Isabel Nunez, and Martha Peña and Anna Martinez also make their way to the podium.
Audrey Galob from Conwell. First, let me say I feel sorry for the people who are so addicted to drugs that they put themselves in the position they find themselves in today. I understand that they are suffering, and I have compassion for them as human beings. I know they need medical attention, food, and supports for living on the streets. But please note that I said they put themselves in that position. They had a choice, and they still have choices. Help is available for them to aid in recovery. My students and the residents of Kensington have no choice. The residents that live in this neighborhood have to constantly be alert not to step on needles or in human feces or vomit. The children must walk or drive through this neighborhood witnessing things that no child should see. I have come out of school to find attics defecating in front of the school building or in between cars in the parking lot. I saw an addict using my car mirror to shoot drugs into his neck. I have personally called 911 at least three times to report unresponsive people lying in the middle of the sidewalk. I don't care to be exposed to these situations either, but I am a grown woman. Our students are children and are seeing these things, and they think it's normal. It's not fair or equitable. They deserve better.
Good morning, Council President Johnson and members of City Council. My name is Courtney Richardson, and I serve as the president of the Barristers Association of Philadelphia. I'm here today in strong support of Resolution 250451 introduced by Councilmember Jones to rename the 53rd Hundred Block of Gerard Avenue Barrister's Way. The barristers were founded seventy-five years ago on January 12, 1950, by thirteen black attorneys at Crystal's Tea Room located right on that block. Since then, we've grown into the largest association of black attorneys in the Commonwealth with approximately a thousand members and are proudly affiliated with the National Bar Association. We take seriously the message of Charles Hamilton Houston, that a lawyer is either a social engineer or a parasite on society. For seventy-five years, we have strived to be social engineers, advocates, and mentors. Barristers is about legacy. We recently lost Larry Turner, who started the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Breakfast in the basement of Mother Bethel, and it's now grown to over seven hundred guests, including Governor Josh Shapiro and Philadelphia's 100th Mayor Sherrell. Thank you.
Good morning, James Washington. Russell H. Conwell Middle Magnet School, school administrator, and I support Bill 240665AA. And I have a poem. It's called "When I Get There." My thirty-minute drive to work makes me wonder how I survive. My drive includes a few minutes on the highway, which takes me away from my home, but it's okay because I pray each and every day. Early in the morning, my eyes feel like bricks, which reminds me of The Matrix, which is a classic and moving and slow-motion reflecting but still boasting about the connection and affection for my profession, anticipating what is next, but I can't go back because my final destination may be whacked. When I get closer and turn onto a street where people are bent over or asleep, and the site is unbelievably deep when I get there, I drive farther, and sometimes I think I need body armor. A crowd of people are walking around like zombies because someone yelled out, "Yo, they're giving out freebies. Is this a tease?" I think not, because soon I will be seeing their bodies. I try to focus and forget about the sights outside of my car window, then I see trash and debris. I'm still thinking about who will be the next hero to bring this neighborhood back from being a zero when I get there. Yes, there are days when the neighborhood has been deprived, however, I still see hope and not goodbyes. As I turn into a parking lot, I'm not surprised by the trash, human feces, syringes, other things to minimize the happiness that is trying to attend to me.
Thank you, bruh. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Sonia Bingham. I stand in support, strong support of Bill 240665AA. You know, I think it's really important to note that I think it's a real tragedy that I have to stand here asking for some sort of guardrails, guidelines, some sort of order within our community. It has been a virtual okay corral, and I see the people that are coming in here supporting, asking us to yet endure or be more sympathetic and put the onus on us as if we have to. have to care, because I don't. No one cares about what I have to go through to pay the bills, to put the food on the table as a single mother of three college-age students whose daughter's graduating from Spelman in December. No one cares! But we have to care, not on my block, not in my community, and not on my watch.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Isabel Alvarado, y vengo presentando a la señora Casey.
Good morning. My name is Isabel Alvarado, and I come here to represent Mrs. Casey.
Y le estoy pidiendo a esta gente que ayuden, por favor, a los niños, porque es triste que nuestros niños tengan que estar todas las mañanas viendo tantas cosas feas en la calle de Filadelfia.
And I come here in order to ask you all to help us, help the children, that every day I see being exposed to all these things over there.
Y también que respeten las propiedades privadas.
And also so that private property is respected.
Hagan su trabajo, pero que lo hagan en sitios donde no haya tanto niño ni tantas y cojan tantas las propiedades de las personas, por favor.
Please, do your job, but make sure that the children are protected and that the property is protected. Do it for the children, please.
Muchas gracias, y es para todos los niños y todas las personas que vivimos aquí en Filadelfia.
Thank you very much for listening to me. This is on behalf of all the children and all the people living here in Philadelphia.
Council Beatty, the chair recognizes majority to Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to be excused for very important council business, and I'd like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Leave as granted. Please state your name for, direct and begin, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bernancy Nunez, and I am a native 7th District. I was born and raised in the 7th District as well, and I would like to have a few words in support of Casey Lozada's bill. Kensington and Allegheny, as a child, I've witnessed what these children are witnessing today. Except for this day and age, it is way worse than 20 years ago. And I want to say, I've walked past people overdosing, I've seen needles on sidewalks, watched violence unfold in front of me and in others' resident steps. And I would say with that, it breaks my heart in knowing that the kids coming up after me or after our next generation is still seeing the same things from 20 years ago. But I haven't lost hope, because leaders like Councilwoman Lozada is fighting for us, she's fighting for our district. Her dedication to our community is real, and I want to personally thank her for standing up for the people of Kensington and the 7th District. This is why I fully support Bill 24665AA. It's time we start protecting our children, restoring our neighborhood, and holding people accountable. We deserve better, and we are ready for this change. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Bernardita Rivera. Vivo en el sur de Filadelfia, y tengo 23 años trabajando, limpiando casas, cuidando personas de la tercera edad y niños. Estoy aquí hoy para apoyar el acto poder, y espero que voten sí lo hagan ley.
Good morning. My name is Bernardita. I live in South Philadelphia, and I have 23, I've been working for 23, no? Sorry. Is it better? Good morning. My name is Bernardita. I live in South Philadelphia, and I have, I've been working for 23 years cleaning houses and taking care of seniors and children. I'm here today to support the Power Act, and I hope you will vote yes and pass it into law.
Esta ley hará que los trabajadores se sientan más seguros en el trabajo, porque esta ley hará que los trabajadores estén más dispuestos a defender sus derechos, y así los trabajadores podrían beneficiarse plena, plenamente de sus salarios, lo que significa que Filadelfia será un lugar mejor para todos los trabajadores.
This law will make workers feel safer in the job, because this law will make workers more willing to stand up for their rights, and so workers would be able to fully benefit from their wages, which means Philadelphia will be a better place for all workers.
Así es muy importante que el gobierno apoye a los trabajadores cuando intentan defender sus derechos, y por eso también exigimos que se le proporcionen 3.1 millones de trabajadores a las oficinas de protección a los trabajadores, para que esta oficina tenga los recursos necesarios para hacer el respaldo que necesitan los trabajadores.
So it is very important that the government support workers when they are trying to defend their rights, and it is why we are demanding 3.1 million to be provided for the Office of Worker Protections, so that this office has the necessary resources to be the support that workers need.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Mi nombre es Lilia. Soy mexicana. Vivo en el sureste de Filadelfia por 23 años. Trabajo limpiando casas desde hace 22 años, y soy miembro de la Alianza Nacional de Trabajadores del Otras. Por eso estoy aquí para apoyar el acto poder, porque como trabajadoras de, del hogar, nos sentiríamos más seguras y protegidas para defender nuestros derechos cuando un empleador no respeta la ley. Si esta ley hubiese existido en el pasado, yo no hubiera sufrido un robo de salario y podría negociar un contrato. Invito a todos los concejales aquí presentes que voten sí a esta nueva ley, y también que le den a la oficina de protección a los trabajadores 3.1 millones para que puedan hacer el trabajo de aplicar las leyes laborales apropiadas y rápidamente. Muchas gracias a todos los miembros del concejal.
My name is Lilia. I am Mexican. I have lived in southeast Philadelphia for 23 years. I have been cleaning houses for 22 years. I am a member of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. This is why I am here to support the Power Act, because as domestic workers, we will feel more secure and protected to defend our rights when an employer does not respect the law. If this law had existed in the past, I would not have suffered wage theft, because I did not speak English and could not negotiate a contract with my employer. He did not pay me for the work that I did. I invite all the council members here to vote yes for this new law, and also to give the Office of Worker Protections 3.1 million dollars in FY26 budgeting, so that they can do the job of enforcing labor laws properly and quickly. Thank you very much to all of the members of council.
Buenos dias, miembros del comité. Me llamo Rosa. Vivo en el norte de Filadelfia. Soy limpiadora de casas, y fui nanny for, for 16 años. Hoy soy miembro de la Alianza Nacional de Trabajadores del Hogar. Estoy aquí para hablar en apoyo del acto poder, porque así nosotras, las trabajadoras del hogar, tendremos más apoyo para ayudar a más personas. Si nosotras otras personas no pudieran trabajar, cuidamos a sus hijos, personas mayores. Si no pueden o no tienen tiempo para limpiar, nosotros lo hacemos. Y muchos empleadores no nos quieren recompensar lo debido, y nos quitan horas, nos quitan el sueldo, y eso no es justo. Yo tuve una experiencia cuando, cuánto me hubiera gustado tener este respaldo. Yo tuve una clienta que no quería pagarlo justo, y me pedía más trabajo del que correspondía a mi pago. Y cuando me fui de ese trabajo a la trabajadora del hogar que recomendé, la maltrataron. Le dieron mucho trabajo y le dijeron malas palabras, y hasta la acusaron de estar indocumentada solo porque exigía un trato justo. El acto poder nos podría haber respaldado, y también dar consecuencias a una empleadora como ella. Por eso les pido que voten sí al acto poder. Gracias.
Good morning, council members. My- My name is Rosa. I live in North Philadelphia. I'm a house cleaner, and I was a nanny for 16 years. Today, I'm a member of the National Domestic Workers Alliance. I'm here to speak in support of the Power Act, because we, domestic workers, will have more support to help more people. Without us, other people wouldn't be able to work. We take care of their children, the elderly, and if they can't or don't have time to clean, we do it. And a lot of employers don't want us to, don't want to give us what is due compensation, and they take hours away from us, and they take our pay, and it's not fair. I had an experience where I would have liked to have the backing of the Power Act. I had a client who did not pay what was fair and asked to do more work than what my pay was given. And when I left the job, the domestic worker I recommended was mistreated, overworked, and called bad names, and even accused of being undocumented just because she demanded fair treatment. The Power Act would, could have supported us and also given consequences to an employer like her. That is why I ask, I ask you to vote yes to this act today. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Me llamo Anna Martinez, y estoy aquí con el Comité de Trabajadores de Restaurante. Soy mexicana, trabajadora de restaurantes, pero sobre todo soy madre soltera de dos pequeños.
My name is Anna, and I am here with a committee of restaurant workers. I am Mexican, a restaurant worker, but more importantly, I am a single mother of two little ones.
Vengo hoy en apoyo de la ley poder, no solo por mí sino por todos los trabajadores actuales y futuros de la ciudad, incluyendo a mis propios hijos. Quiero que en Filadelfia sea un lugar seguro y que apoya a todos sus trabajadores, inmigrantes o no. Si nosotros qué sería de esta ciudad?
I come in support of the Power Act, not only for myself, for all current and future workers in the city, including my own children. I want Philadelphia to be a safe and supportive place for all its workers, immigrant or not. Without us, what would the city be?
Durante mi tiempo en el sector servicios, desagradablemente he sido víctima de acoso en el lugar de trabajo. Cuando se lo comuniqué a mi empleador el daño que sufrí, fue ignorado. Como la única mujer en ese restaurante, sentí que no importaba mientras veía a mi jefe hacer bromas con mi agresor. Tras múltiples intentos fallidos de alzar la voz, decidí que no podía seguir trabajando en un lugar que no me valoraba, que no se preocupaba de investigar, de creerme, de protegerme. Tuve que preguntarme cuánto veneno estaba dispuesta a tomar antes de que me matara.
During my time in the service industry, I unfortunately have been a victim of harassment in the workplace. When I communicated this to my employer, their harm I suffered was dismissed. As the only woman in that restaurant, I felt like I didn't matter as I watched my boss make jokes with my abuser. After multiple failed attempts to speak up, I decided I couldn't work in a place that didn't value me, that didn't care to investigate, to believe me, to protect me. I had to ask myself, how much poison was I willing to take before it killed me?
Era yo la primera mujer ignorada por este empleador, lo dudo mucho. Por todo ello, mi petición a los concejales es que financien totalmente la oficina de protección. Sin esta financiación, cómo vamos a exigir responsabilidades a quienes han negado activamente los derechos de los trabajadores, sin un sistema organizado y que funcione para investigar a los malos empleadores y proteger a los trabajadores. De ahí el nombre, la gente de esta ciudad nunca sentirá el amor fraternal que supuestamente decimos tener.
Was I the first woman to be ignored by my employer? I highly doubt it. Because of this, my request for you council members is to fully fund the Office of Workers' Protection. Without this funding, how will we hold accountable those who have actively denied workers' rights? Without an effective, organized, and functioning system to investigate by the employers and protect workers, the people of the city will never feel the brotherly love we supposedly claim to hold.
Hola, mi nombre es Haley. Soy miembro del Comité de Trabajadores de Restaurante. Yo he vivido toda mi vida aquí en Filadelfia, y soy descendiente de padres mexicanos. Trabajar en restaurantes o en cualquier otra industria de servicio no es fácil. Siendo inmigrante y mujer, soy vulnerable a la explotación de un empleador, igual que muchos de mis compañeros en este cuarto. Pero hoy me encuentro animada y con muchas ganas de seguir adelante, porque cuando esta ley entre en acción, nos protegerá a todos nosotros como trabajadores, incluyendo a mis padres. Los jefes no tomarán represalias contra nosotros sabiendo que hay una ley que nos respalda, que nos permite hablar y defender nuestros derechos. Por fin, el respeto y la dignidad que merecemos se reflejará en las leyes de nuestra ciudad, ya que nadie está por encima de la ley. Mi miedo siempre ha sido en ir con mi empleador y pedir mejores condiciones y tratos en el lugar de trabajo, y con esta ley pierdo este miedo. Ahora tengo la confianza en mi empleador, en mis compañeros, y en mi ciudad para hacer lo que amo. No solo quiero que escuchen ese testimonio, sino que lo apoyen. Todos tenemos el deber de exigir y defender la justicia. Unidos venceremos. Gracias a ustedes por este espacio y escuchar mis palabras. Gracias.
Working in restaurants or any other service industry for that matter is not easy. As an immigrant and a woman, I am vulnerable to exploitation by an employer, as are my fellow workers in this room. But today, I find myself encouraged and eager to move forward, because when this law goes into action, it will protect us all as workers, including my parents. The bosses will not retaliate against us, knowing that there is a law that backs us up, that allows us to speak and defend our rights. Finally, the respect and dignity we deserve will be reflected in the laws of our city, as no one is above the law. I not only want you to hear this testimony, I want you to support it. We all have a duty to demand and defend justice. United, we will win. Thank you for this space and listening to my words.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Doniera. Soy miembro del Comité de Trabajadores de Restaurante, y tengo 15 años trabajando en la industria restaurante. Y con certeza puedo decir que hacen falta cambios, más información para los trabajadores, y castigos severos para los empleadores y supervisores. Durante este periodo, me ha tocado ver y ser parte de tantas injusticias y maltratos hacia nosotros como trabajadores. Pero hoy, con su apoyo y con la implementación de la Ley Poder, podemos decir, basta. No más injusticias, no más represarias, porque merecemos sentirnos seguros en nuestros lugares de trabajo, porque esta ley no solo beneficia a los empleados, sino también a nuestras familias, a la comunidad, y a nuestra ciudad. Y si algún empleador está en contra de este cambio, deberíamos de preguntarnos de qué, qué es lo que esconde o de qué tiene miedo. Afortunadamente, tenemos de nuestro lado a dueños de restaurantes que apoyan esta ley, y eso nos da confianza y abre la puerta para el cambio. Gracias por su tiempo. Nuestro futuro está en sus manos.
Good morning. My name is Doniera, and I am a member of the Committee of Restaurant Workers. I have been working in the restaurant industry for 15 years, and I can confidently say that changes are needed. More information for workers and severe punishments for employers and supervisors. During this time, I have witnessed and been a part of so many injustices and mistreatment directed at us workers. But today, with your support and the implementation of the Power Act, we can say enough is enough. No more injustices, no more retaliation, because we deserve to feel safe in our workplaces. This law not only benefits employees, but also families, our community, and our city. If an employer is against this change, we should ask ourselves, what are they hiding and what are they afraid of? Fortunately, we have restaurant owners on our side who support this law, and that give us confidence and opens the door for change. Thank you for your time. We leave our future in your hands.
May we also have Doniera Lorenzo, Luis Cortez, Carmen Ortiz, Leah Sierra, George Torres, Kelly Gissen, and Benakia Nunez also make their way to the podium.
Buenas tardes. Miembro de Casey Lozada, la concejal, y demás personas. Mi nombre es, mi nombre es Marta Peña.
My name is Marta Peña.
Vengo en representación de los niños y los negocios. Yo soy una persona que tengo una niña de 11 añ, de 11 años hoy, pero hace- pero hace unos años, aproximadamente seis, una persona, uh, de la calle, no sé cómo decirlo porque no quiero ofender, pero una persona es, no, en sus cinco sentidos.
About six years ago, somebody that wasn't in all of their senses, I, I don't want to be offensive in the way that I express myself.
Trató de llevarme mi niña de los brazos-
...my arms and I was trying to embrace her.
Solo logró llevarse el trajecito que cargaba la niña dejándome la desnuda en la calle. Solo dejó, me dejó, se llevó el trajecito de la niña dejándome la niña desnuda en la calle.
That person was taking my child and as I was trying to save her, they were only able to take my child's clothes and I was left with my child naked.
También, yo tengo un negocio donde, yo soy estilista.
I also have a business where I'm a stylist.
Es en Kensington 18, 11 East Summit.
It's in Kensington, 18, 11 East Summit.
Donde las aguja es, es en la misma rampa y acera.
The needles are all over the ramp and the same sidewalk.
Yo también fui de las personas que me clavé una aguja también.
I am a person that has also suffered getting punctured by one of these needles.
Afortunadamente estaba limpia.
Fortunately, it was a clean needle.
Pero desafortunadamente también hay muchas cosas que los niños de la escuela y en especial también mi hija y en nombre de todos los niños tienen que cruzar eso y mirar cosas, no voy a decir porque son cosas feas.
But the unfortunate part about this is that children, my daughter, and in the name of all the children have to go through these streets, these sidewalks with needles and they have to also witness unfortunate things too.
No estoy... Pues gracias y buenas tardes.
I want to thank you.
We have Luis Cortez, Carmen Ortiz, Leah Sierra, George Torres, Kelly Gilson, Benakia Núñez, Fabio Rivera, Paul Bertlett, and Tony Heel also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Carmen Ortiz. I am a retired school district and I live in the 7th district. I spent a decade helping children through their trauma and addiction in our homes and in our blocks. Now I am retired and I still see the same thing, pain right outside my door. Every day, I see people suffering. We need help that heals everyone, not just those in crisis. Children walking to school, seniors living alone, and families. I support the bill 240665AA because no one should feel fear or discomfort in the place they called home. On top of that, as a taxpayer and homeowner, I think that we deserve the quality of better living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Leah Sierra and I come before you as a granddaughter, that was my momma, a neighbor and a young woman who sees firsthand what's happening to the 7th district every day. My grandmother lives in Kensington and so do other members of my family and I'm here to tell you that it's not just statistics being affected, it's people. People that are trying to live decent, dignified lives in the middle of a crisis that they didn't ask to be a part of. We aren't talking about a lack of compassion or turning our backs on those that are struggling. We're talking about balance. The right to sit on your front steps, feel safe, or have children feeling safe while walking to school and not having to walk over needles, or seniors being able to bring in their groceries without fear because someone has passed out on their porch. I've seen it with my own eyes. Mobile units that claim to be helping that aren't always coordinated, they come in, hand things out, and leave without cleanup or support for those who actually live there. My grandmother is expected to go through this, to under, to smile and just understand while her block, where I grew up, becomes a failed dumping ground. We ask that these services, we ask that these service providers show the same care for residents that they do for the recipients of their aid, that they work with the community instead of just driving through it. Because my family, neighbors, and community deserve to be safe and not just be collateral damage. I support bill 240665AA because it's about protecting those who are always left out of policy conversations. This isn't about neglecting the vulnerable but protecting the invisible. Thank you.
Okay, cool, cool. My name is Kelly Ormore, commonly known as Scout Gilson, and I have a message. To all of those who vote in favor of 240665, this is what you tell our children, that if you need help, you are to be feared, you are to be dehumanized, you are to starve and dehydrate, and those, and those that dare offer you aid in those most vulnerable moments are to be punished and criminalized. I don't want children to have their neighborhood back. None of the people in this room are young enough to have experienced a neighborhood that wasn't marked with violent systemic poverty, with discriminatory drug policy and social stigma surrounding needing help. Instead, I want them to be shown what brotherly love means. I want it to be demonstrated so that they know that if they're ever in need, that they need not fear being the fourth person in line, that those in need are, have their needs met by another person. I am lucky enough to say that in August, I will have five years off of opioids. I have survived the fentanyl epidemic. I received that message as a child. I want to break that cycle. We can do that together. People need help beyond the hours of 6:00 AM or 6:00 PM, or what, 6:00 AM, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM between F and Allegheny on Kensington, it's really east, yeah, what's the exact? Yeah, but, yeah, either way.
My name is Dr. Evelyn Núñez and I serve as the CEO and Superintendent of Esperanza Academy, an institution deeply rooted in Kensington community and dedicated to providing not just education, but refuge, stability, and hope for our students and families. I'm here today to voice my support for bill 24665, a measure that will bring much-needed structure to the deployment of mobile service providers by designating appropriate areas and protecting our safe quarters, residential blocks, but most urgently, the spaces around our schools. As someone born and raised in Kensington and as a lifelong educator and advocate, I come to you today not just with data, but with a heavy heart, a desensitized urgency. I have witnessed up close the trauma etched into the daily lives of our children. Kensington is now known as one of the largest open-air drug markets in the country. But for our students, some as young as five, I see every day. This is not a statistic, it is the reality that they walk through each and every day. How can we expect these young minds to focus on multiplication tables, on reading comprehension, on dreams of college and career when they, every single day, their path to school teaches them fear and despair? Our schools are meant to be sanctuaries, but how can we nurture minds and spirits when what waits for them outside is fear and despair? I ask you to consider this bill and to please pass it today. Thank you.
We have Fabio Rivera, Paul Bertlett, Tony Heel, Maylin Landis, Joan Pompe, Sam Pfeiffer, Eileen Callahan, Kwame Achapilong, Crystal Greenberg, and Jim Cummings also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Tony Heel with ALS United Mid-Atlantic and I'm speaking in support of ALS Awareness Month. We want to thank council members Ahmad and Driscoll for making this resolution possible. And I'm joined today by my friends who are living with ALS, Eric, Julian, and Doug who are here today, and my friend Mary Ellen who lost her husband to ALS, Donna from ALS United Mid-Atlantic, and Dr. Piera Passinelli from the Jefferson Weinberg ALS Center. ALS awareness is especially important now as we face federal cuts to research. But Philadelphia has long been a beacon of hope for ALS with nationally recognized research centers like the Jefferson Weinberg Center and with support from the Philadelphia Phillies who have worked to strike out ALS since 1984. People with ALS live on average just three to five years from diagnosis and there is no known cure. And we are here to help and you are here to help us as well. We ask you that you please continue to advocate for funding for ALS care and research so that we can find new treatments and cures for this disease. Thank you.
I'm Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I support Councilmember Lazada's resolution to restrict mobile service providers in Kensington. What is being promoted by those who argue against this resolution is a flawed policy called harm reduction. Harm reduction proponents believe in making drug use as safe as possible for addicts, whereas Kensington businesses and residents want safe streets for themselves, their children, and visitors. Proponents of harm reduction want a safe space for drug addicts. Harm reduction is a gift to drug dealers and a curse on society. City councils should send a very clear message that drug dealers and their drug-addicted customers who haunt our streets will not be tolerated, not just in Kensington, but throughout the city of Philadelphia. And to that end, city council should sue District Attorney Krasner to finally and fully enforce existing laws. You have the authority to do that. Please act. Thank you.
My name is Paul Brulette. I'm a harm reductionist and an amputee and I'm here to speak out against bill 240665. Last week, thank you, last week, Councilmember Lazada mentioned amputees in her remarks and I want to thank her for that. It meant something to be acknowledged, but it also reminded me how important it is to speak up. Because when I lost my leg, I was in the hospital for 89 days, I went through 38 surgeries, and I spent about 30 of those days in the ICU. I am lucky to be standing here today. That time in my life was painful, but I was fortunate to not have city council debating whether or not I should receive the medical care that kept me alive. That is exactly what this bill, 240665, will do to hundreds of our neighbors. It prints their lives in jeopardy. No one on this council is qualified to decide when and where people receive medical care. No one here should be determining when our unhoused neighbors are able to receive life-sustaining supplies like food and water. When you block outreach workers and mobile service providers from doing your job, you are not solving a problem, you are creating a crisis, and you are sentencing people to die. I urge all members of this council, do not turn this body into a death panel. Vote no on this bill. And Councilmember Lazada, I ask you directly to withdraw this bill. You still have time to do the right thing. Please find your heart. Finally, I want to remind everybody...
We have Joan Pompe, Sam Pfeiffer, Eileen Callahan, Kwame Achapilong, Crystal Greenberg, Jim Cummings, May Jada Dove, Kelsey Leone, Jacob Zajcek, and Hannah Messineheimer also make their way to the podium.
I'm speaking on behalf of Marissa Cosman. She is at work today. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Marissa Cosman. I'm a lifelong Philadelphia resident. I'm not a person who uses drugs for personal recovery. I've never been homeless. I'm strongly urging you to reconsider bill 240665AA. The language in this bill as written is extremely dangerous and will do more harm than good to the residential community in Kensington. In 2014, I lost my best friend to a heroin overdose. Every year since then, I continue to experience more loss. My friends are dying. When I say my friends, I mean people I grew up with, people I went to school with, people I've built relationships with, and people I've made memories with. I'm 30 years old. By 25, I attended more funerals than someone will attend in their entire lives. Myself and others doing this work are not the cause of the crisis in Kensington. We are a response to it. We are the ones doing food drives, giving out snacks and water, and freeze pops on a hot day. We do this for both the unhoused and residential community. We are the ones letting people use our phones to contact family members. We are the ones reconnecting people with their loved ones. We are the ones getting people into treatment and making sure they have everything they need. We are the ones cleaning up the streets and parks, disposing of trash and discarded syringes. We are the ones filling in the gaps and providing wound care. We are the ones responding to an overdose before medics arrive.
So... So we're going to ask, we're going to ask, hold up, hold up ma'am. We're going to ask that everybody please respect the time because we want to hear from everyone, but if you go over your time, someone else who wants to speak may have to leave. So everyone, please respect the time. Thank you.
My name is Sam Pfeiffer and I'm an organizer with Positive Women's Network and a longtime Philadelphian, and I am here to continue to oppose 240665 as I have been since September of last year. And if I didn't know better, I'd think those sweet babies and community members who testified in support of 240665 were actually here in opposition because I agree with most of them. I heard them share the trauma of seeing people passed out, litter of needles on their street. I agree, our neighbors who are unhoused deserve help. This bill doesn't stop people from overdosing in front of schools. It blocks rapid response. This bill guarantees that children will see even more dead people. And I'd like to remind you, bill 240665 severely restricts help and support that those students said their neighbors needed. But there is one thing I never want, is to teach my children, is to witness someone struggling for food or medical care and feel nothing. Above all, I'm a human being and I want to feel empathy and I want to be able to help. Don't leave people to die or deem them unworthy of love and care. A yes vote on this bill is not a vote for safety, it is a vote for abandonment, for punishment, for more death. And how dare you use children as a shield for accountability? We will hold council accountable for every person this bill harms. We will remember who chose cruelty over care and we will organize even harder.
Hello, council members and constituents. My name is Kwame Achapilong and I'm a member of the Philly Black Worker Project. A worker center advocating for the rights of black and brown workers here in our city. We are proud of the Power Act. We are proud to see our collective work come to fruition. I want to thank our comrades, council members, and the constituents for doing the work to ensure a better future for the workers of the city. As a worker, the Power Act ensures that I am protected from retaliation from something as simple as trying to use my legally mandated sick pay or standing up for my fellow workers when our paychecks are short. As a worker, I am happy I can rest easy knowing that my coworkers will not be so easily disappeared by ICE when their labor rights are violated and we decide to stand up for them. As a worker, I know the Power Act is on my side because abusive employers will be publicly named to protect other workers and workers can receive financial reparations when they experience harm or abuse at work. We are protected. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Crystal Greenberg and I strongly urge this council to oppose bill 240665. I am a nurse in Philadelphia and I work with unhoused people with substance use disorder in Kensington. Every day, patients tell me that they would have died without access to the services that mobile units provide. How do you expect these services to function when they need a non-existent permit and when they have to move 1,000 feet every 45 minutes? The punitive approaches being implemented by this council in the form of cruel and inhumane police sweeps and wellness courts towards residents of Kensington will never work. We must offer services and resources, including those by mobile service providers which are already working. This council views the substance use epidemic as bad PR for Philadelphia and a problem to be solved instead of seeing a group of Philadelphians who deserve dignity, respect, and access to services. I wish this conversation was about expanding access to care and creating more routes of support to our patients, neighbors, and friends. Instead, I come here during National Nurses Week to plead with city council not to criminalize healthcare and access to basic resources like food and Narcan. This city council has made many mistakes which have cost Kensington residents their lives. Now is the time to change course and focus on the health and safety of all Philadelphians. Thank you.
My name is Jada Dove and I'm with the American Heart Association. Thank you, Councilmember Ahmad, and Philly City Council for recognizing May as Stroke Awareness Month. This month, the American Stroke Association, a division of the American Heart Association, is proud to spotlight stroke prevention, education, and recovery. Stroke is a medical emergency that can happen to anyone at any age and once you've had one, your risk for another increases. That's why awareness is so critical. Knowing the warning signs can save lives. Remember FAST: F, face drooping; A, arm weakness; S, speech difficulty; T, time to call 911. For our Spanish-speaking communities, we also promote Rápido, a culturally-relevant tool to help recognize stroke symptoms quickly. Stroke remains one of Philadelphia's top five causes of death. Through our Get With The Guidelines Stroke Program, we partner with hospitals to improve care and outcomes using the latest evidence-based practices. We also know that high blood pressure is the leading cause of stroke and is often referred to as the silent killer. One of our initiatives that we are especially proud of is our team-up to take down... One of our initiatives that we are especially proud of is our Team Up to Take Down High Blood Pressure, a collaboration with Penn Medicine focused on West and Southwest Philadelphia. Thank you for amplifying our mission. Together, we can assure every Philadelphian knows how to prevent, recognize, and respond to stroke.
We have Kelsey Leone, Jacob Zajcek, Hannah Messenheimer, Sophie Courtney, May Allison Lee, Zoe Jasper, Milady Morales, and Cherie Dominguez also make their way to the podium.
Before my time starts, Councilmember Bass, my friend Katari Andriel registered to speak but wasn't on the record. Is it okay if we split my time between the two of us?
Oh-- I'm sorry, no, that's not permitted. I apologize, it's not permitted.
But I've registered to speak. I'm a harm reductionist, and tomorrow I will graduate from doula school and become a doula supporting people who are pregnant and their families and their children. I want to say that I stand here in opposition to Bill 240665, but I also want to say that I agree with ninety percent of what the people speaking out in support of this bill believe. I believe that everybody has a right to a community that is safe and that can flourish, and children can grow up feeling the love of their neighbors. And I see the photos that you've brought of the wounds, and they shock me too. They shock me too, and they are on people that I know and love. My fear is that this bill will make conditions worse. It will make them worse. It is not the solution that Councilmember Lazada claims it is. And she will use this bill to allow gentrification of Kensington the same way that she allowed, that she voted for Chinatown.
Jacob Zajcek with the American Heart Association. Thank you, Councilmember Ahmadi, and the entire Philadelphia City Council for recognizing May as Stroke Awareness Month. Stroke is the fifth-leading cause of death in the United States and a major cause of long-term disability for adults, but it is preventable and treatable. One in five women will have a stroke, and among women, black women have the highest prevalence of stroke. May is also Blood Pressure Awareness Month. People with high blood pressure have an increased risk of having a stroke. Unfortunately, more than one in three American adults with high blood pressure don't even know they have it. High blood pressure is a major risk factor for stroke. That is why the American Heart Association is committed to improving access to self-monitor blood pressure machines. Access to these machines can help ensure pressure is checked and kept in check, and can have a great reduction in risk of stroke. The American Heart Association looks forward to working with Philadelphia City Council and the entire city to implement innovative policy solutions to address stroke and heart disease. Once again, we'd like to thank Councilmember Ahmadi for the resolution recognizing May as Stroke Awareness Month, and thank you all to Philadelphia City Council for your commitment to addressing heart disease and stroke. Have a great day.
My name is Hannah Messenheimer. I am a resident and honored to serve as the United States Tennis Association's Community Coordinator for our Philadelphia district. I'm thrilled to speak in support of the resolution recognizing May as National Tennis Month in Philadelphia. Philadelphia holds a special place in the history of American tennis, from the historic Germantown Cricket Club, one of the oldest tennis venues in the nation, and host of the early years of the U.S. Open, to the unparalleled legacy of Philadelphia Tennis Club, the oldest black-owned tennis club in the country. Our city has long been a center of innovation, excellence, and inclusivity in tennis, a culture that remains strong today. Philadelphia is home to nearly two hundred and fifty public tennis courts. Nationally, nearly seventy percent of individuals who play tennis do so at public parks and facilities, which is why I'm so passionate about advocating for our city courts. I'm proud to say that more than ten percent of individuals in the Philadelphia area play tennis higher than the national average. Studies show that playing tennis can add up to ten years to one's life. The USDA provides grant opportunities to support local programs, facilities, and outreach that reflect the mission of making tennis accessible and inclusive for people of all ages and backgrounds. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cherie Dominguez, and I am here in support of Bill 240665AA. So every morning, I drive my daughter through Kensington on our way to Willard Elementary. And every morning, I have to say, "Look down, baby," because what surrounds us are scenes of open drug use, people injecting each other, passed out on the sidewalks, some overdosed and some dying. This is her route to school. Her childhood should be filled with curiosity and joy, not the trauma of being told to look away from the brokenness. It crushes me every time I have to do this, but more than that, it should compel all of us here to act. Proverbs 31:8 says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves." Today, I'm here speaking on behalf of my daughter. I'm speaking today not just for my daughter, but for every child forced to walk through suffering they did not create, and every person laying on the street who once was someone's child too. We're not denying them care. It's the way it's being done. We can't look away anymore. It's time to look up, speak up, and do something.
Good morning. My name is Allison Lee. I'm a senior at the University of Pennsylvania, volunteering for three years in Kensington. I'd like to waste my strong opposition against the bill today, and I'd like us to just consider the question, is there any other city in this entire country that restricts the movement of mobile health care workers from the hours of 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.? I'd like us to consider--
Exactly, yes.
Please don't, please don't--
My friend saw someone overdose on the train a few weeks ago, and no one should have to see someone die. Everyone in this room is here for the same thing. We want our city to be safer, we want our kids to be safer, we want our community to be safe, and harm reduction is about keeping the entire community safe. Entire community. So when we vote against this, or when we vote on this bill today, I'd like us to just consider that question, is there any other city in this country that says that health care workers can only work from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.? Thank you.
My name is Zoe Jasper, and I believe in harm reduction, because punishing people for their suffering is cruel, ineffective, and too often fatal. You don't need to have experienced homelessness or addiction to recognize the humanity of all Philadelphians. Many of us are only a stroke of bad luck away from being on the streets and losing our support system. It is shameful that any city councillor would support the criminalization of helping our neighbors in need. Mobile service providers are not the cause of the opioid epidemic, but they play a crucial role in responding to it, especially when the city does not have adequate resources to care for its most vulnerable. Week after week, I have been here, and I've listened to the impassioned testimonies of people who have experienced addiction, lost their loved ones to overdose, or are experts in the field of public health speaking out against this bill. All Philadelphia residents deserve better than this. We deserve better than Bill 240665.
We have, we have Milady Morales, we have Milady Morales--
So we're gonna ask, so we're gonna ask that please do not yell out. We want to make sure everyone is heard, regardless of their position, but please do not yell out. Thank you.
We have Milady Morales, May Gloria Cartagena Hart, Dom Chacon, Daisy Cordona, Thomas Bradley, and Edwin Desamore also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Milady Morales. I am a Kensington community resident, born and raised in the Kensington community. I'm here today to support the Bill 240665, which proposed a regulation of the mobile service providers on Kensington Avenue. This legislation is not only timely, it is necessary. For too long, Kensington Avenue has been a space where unregulated mobile activities has contributed to disorder congestion and, in some cases, unsafe distribution of goods and services. While we recognize that not only all mobile providers operate in responsibility, the lack and clear regulation has enabled some to exploit a vulnerable environment. We've seen trucks park and definitely generate litter and operate without regard for the health and safety of our community. This bill offers a path to a responsible management to ensure that any mobile servers operating in the corridor at specific site and specific hours are cannibal and operating in ways that align with the community standard revolution goals for this neighborhood. Importantly, this is not about exclusion, it's about accountability. Responsible mobile vendors can still thrive, but under guidelines that respect the space, the residents, and the business who are investing in this corridor every day. I respectfully urge the council to pass the Bill 240665 and stand with the Kensington community as we work to reclaim and restore the public spaces that belong to all of us. Thank you.
My name is Gloria Cartagena Hart. I'm well-known as Smoochess in my Kensington community. I just want to give flowers to Kessie for fighting and showing that passion and believing in us. We have a lot of potential, good families. I just want to say, stop, it's enough. Stop putting us in a back burner. We've been having a lot of false promises throughout the years. I'm a Kensington resident. I fight for my community, I fight for black and brown, but today it's about human rights. They deserve help, yes, but our family, the children deserve better. If you see these pictures and you see the children this morning, if you don't have a heart and that don't trust you, then you don't belong in that chair that we voted and put you in there today. So please, I'm asking you as a resident of Kensington, help us get our blocks back so our families can have healing. Stop being traumatized for what they see and live right in races we deserve there, just as South Philly, Fishtown, Port Richmond have those areas. We deserve the same. Thank you.
Daisy Cordona, I am here in support of Bill 240665. Kensington has reached its current state due in a large--
Kensington has reached its current state in large part due to lack of regulation. For too long, individuals and organizations have been allowed to operate here without oversight, doing whatever they want, wherever they want it, often with devastating consequences for the community. Care providers and individuals offering food or services frequently choose to do so in public parks, on sidewalks, and directly in front of private homes and businesses. These activities, while often well-intentioned, routinely leave behind trash, needles, bloody medical supplies, and other hazardous waste. Even more concerning, people are struggling with, people struggling with addiction often remain in these areas to get high, refusing to the offered resources and creating unsafe and unsanitary environment for nearby residents. Although there are existing laws meant to prevent unregulated feeding and medical care in many, in public places, they are not enforced. Many of these individuals and groups do not obtain the required permits, which leads to blocked traffic, damaged public spaces, and residents feeling unsafe to enjoy their own homes and community. We are not asking for these resources to be taken away. We understand the need for care and compassion, but for the sake of everyone, residents, business owners, service providers, and those in need, these efforts must be regulated and coordinated. The bill is a necessary step towards restoring dignity, safety, and accountability in Kensington.
We have Thomas Bradley, Edwin Desamore, May Ivan Vivar, Shane Kiefer, Sam Liu, Justin Royg, Queen Judith Robinson, Sergio Sia, Reverend Philip Gebliter, and Yomara Santiago also make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Dom Chacon. I'm a representative of Somerset Neighbors for Better Living. Our community organization is here in support of Bill 240665, and we're asking that it be extended to cover District 1, our district. Our section of Kensington, we have hundreds of mobile providers flooding our streets on a daily basis. Of these mobile providers, they are not all medically trained. A lot of these are church groups, volunteers, youth groups that are trying to do good, which we understand. However, we feel that the benefits they provide are less than the damage that they are doing. One of the most problematic concentrations is at the intersection of Ruth Street and Somerset Street, directly in front of the one affordable housing complex in our section of Kensington, with providers flooding the streets six to seven days and multiple times a day. This location is directly in front of our main transit stops for both Septa L and 54 Bus. Residents are left to deal with the aftermath of feces, trash, food, bodies. Thank you for your time.
My name is Yomara. Good afternoon, councilmembers, community members, and colleagues. For those who don't know me, again, my name is Yomara Santiago, and I am here to testify in favor of Bill 240665. Not only am I an employee and your colleague, I am also a mother, a resident, a volunteer, and a resource in my community of the Seventh District. First and foremost, reading is fundamental. This bill is exactly what our community wants and needs. We spoke up, and they heard our pleas. It's easy for folks to have an opinion when they are on the outside looking in and don't live, see, or go through what we do day in and day out. But we do. We live it and we breathe it. Why do my children have to live with these conditions? Why do my neighbors, schools, and local businesses have to wake up to trash, feces, urine, and used syringes on their front steps? We see it every day, when we walk through the neighborhoods, when me and my daughters ride the bus, take the trains. Why do my eight-year-olds have to be exposed to a life we did not choose to live? Is the Seventh District not deserving of the same opportunities and quality of life as your districts? Not only will this bill regulate the distribution of medical care and mobile services within our district and communities, it will hold providers accountable and help increase our quality of life for years to come, impacting our next generations. We all deserve better, including the constituents that so desperately require these services. So please, listen to our cry and vote yes on this bill, because if they can get themselves to the opioid, they can get themselves to the help and services they need. Thank you.
I am a member of Philly Boriquas, a community organization that works with the Puerto Rican community in the city and in Kensington. I am here to speak against Bill 240665. We are horrified that once again councilmembers are acting against the interests of the most vulnerable people in our community and not listening to the experts that are on the front lines. Harm reduction is not the cause of this crisis, it is the treatment. This bill unnecessarily criminalizes medical services and food distribution at a time when the government is cutting essential services such as Medicaid, and there is high food insecurity. Right now, people are passing out on porches from overdose. Without these essential services, they will start dying. Councilmember Lazada continues to misrepresent the voices of Kensington residents and businesses in her district by saying that we are all against mobile services and that we are a monolith and are not in favor of this bill. Kitsey and O'Russi have a vision for the Seventh District that does not include people like us, and she will displace her supporters. We know this is a larger strategy to gentrify the community in favor of developers. Please vote no against this bill. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Philip Galiptar. I'm the Archdeacon for the Episcopal Diocese of Pennsylvania, and I speak in opposition of Bill 240665AA. The stated problems are real. It breaks all of our hearts to see Kensington like this and for children and residents to have to suffer through this. However, the bill does not address the root problems or the end symptoms. Restricting care, restricting care, and this is the most restrictive bill put forward so far, restricting care is not going to make folks move away from the neighborhood or off of people's steps. You are putting a Band-Aid on a bullet wound and then telling the victims that they have to walk and only go of certain locations at certain times to get that Band-Aid. Please vote no against 240665AA.
May Mike Africa, David Kushner, Crystal Strong, and Wanda Walker also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Ivan Vivar, and I'm not here to play politics. I'm not here to pit the community against one another. I'm really so enlightened and happy to see these brave children come into City Hall and speak what I believe is their mind. And I'm also really happy to see lots of people who look like me and my family members supporting labor rights. But what I'm really here is to speak out against Bill 2605AA. We have met and asked for amendments to this bill as recently as this Monday. The proposed changes still are not holistic enough to remove the litter and nuisance stated, which is the goal of-- stated, which is the goal of this bill. In fact, this bill and its reduction of services in hours and people served will let more addicts and people suffering through opioid addiction to fall through the cracks, which will again work against the stated goals of this bill. 911 medical service already overloaded with people, and meeting them where they are is necessary to overcome this trend. There are lots at 3244, 3252 Kensington Avenue where city government could take over and then provide homeless people or provide these services, instead of making the go a mile or mile and a half further to where they're suffering to meet treatment. And this is slippery slope where we start penalizing and finding people similar to search and frisk, broken window policing, and this is not the answer to solving opioid addiction crisis here in Philadelphia. If there was a house on fire, would you ask how much water is needed? Would you measure where that water is coming from? Would you ask me if my house is fired if I'm on drugs and do you need to put water on my fire? No, thank you.
So, sir, before you speak, I'm going to ask, if we could just have a little more quiet in the balcony, it really, it resonates very loud here on the floor. Thank you. If we could just lower your voices in the balcony, please, so we can hear everyone. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Sergio Seah. I'm the political director of Reclaim Philadelphia, and I could read. This council is presenting us with a false choice, either help the unhoused and people struggling with mental health and substance use, or help the residents. There's another world where we choose to help both and don't put one group against the other. That's not what we are seeing with this legislation today. As someone who takes medication daily to avoid contracting HIV, I found it surprising to have council members HIV last week in support of the mobile services ban, when I've seen little to nothing from the city council to actually address HIV. Philadelphia is the number-one big city in the country when it comes to HIV and STI rates. We've all known this is a fact for a while, but what have you done? You voted to ban overdose prevention centers that would decrease needles and trash related to substance abuse and would get people tested and treated for HIV and other blood borne illnesses. Do the kids here know they would have seen less trash, less people overdosing if you actually did not ban overdose prevention centers across the city? When Mayor Parker decided to zero out funding for safe needle exchange, something we've done for 30 years, scientifically proven to fight against HIV rates, something the Center for Disease Control sent y'all a letter saying would lead to an HIV outbreak? Here, Mayor Parker's health officials testifying to city council saying this would lead to HIV rates. What did you do? Nothing. Nothing you have done for HIV rates, so don't you dare talk about HIV when you have done nothing to deal with it. This legislation will do nothing to deal with that causes. It will only create more harm, more cause, more amputations, more overdoses...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please be respectful so that everyone can speak.
So we have Mike Africa, David Kushner, Crystal Strong, Wanda Walker. May Wick Savage, Paul Birdsong, and Obonahagans also make their way to the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mike Africa Jr. On the move. I hope that ain't taking up too much time. I just wanted to say, this is not the end. This is the beginning of something. The police should not be allowed to murder people and get away with it. I wanted, I wasn't prepared to do this this way, but I wanted to begin this by saying thank you to councilmember Jamie Gauthier for the moment that I mentioned making May 13th an annual holiday. She did not hesitate. She did not flinch. She stood up. I was, I grew up thinking that all politicians are, tell lies and lie incessantly, and I think that's pretty true for the most part, but Jamie Gauthier is different, y'all. You know, one thing that she recognized is that it's never right to drop a bomb. It's not right to kill people. It's not right to shoot 10,000 rounds of ammunition at people, and so she stood up for the humanity in my family, and I just wanted to say thank you to her and thank you. And this May 13th is Move Day. The day of remembrance. On the move.
On the move, everyone. My name is Crystal Strong. I am a scholar and organizer and the archive director of the Move Activist Archive. Can I have every Move member, every Move supporter stand up? Family member, everyone, stand up. You deserve a round of applause. I am not here to give flowers to City Council or the city of Philadelphia. Yes, this is a day of remembrance. Yes, this resolution is 40 years overdue, but the work is not yet finished, right? This should be a day in which all Move members, all Move supporters, the neighbors that were affected on Osage Avenue, that they have all of the things that they need, right? Mike Africa Jr. purchased back the house that was stolen through eminent domain. He has to pay a $400,000 mortgage. He should not have to pay back a dime, right? And so, all I want to say here is that the city of Philadelphia must write a blank check for the Move organization and for all Move people who are trying to continue to fight for justice and recognition for what the city of Philadelphia did to their family.
Good morning, beautiful people. My name is Wanda Walker. I have one minute. I haven't spoken in three weeks, so I'm going to make it fast. First of all, I want to start with the three things or the four things I come to talk about, which is generational wealth. We need a bill, a resolution, an ordinance for seniors. Senior safety bill...
Wanda, you are scheduled to speak on the renaming of...
Yes. A landlord safety bill, a teacher safety bill, and I would like to see all tickets after seven years, parking tickets, fall off. I would like to also say, I'm listening to all these people speak today, and even though I worked in Kensington at Kensington Hospital, I don't have a right to say what should and should not be. I do realize, and thank you all for speaking, that the people who live in Kensington and most have to put up with this situation should have the most say. It's not, it's not what you all are doing, it's how you're doing it, and because we have given Kensington such a pass for so long, we now have a serious problem that has to be rectified. So I want to ask, did we create this problem by allowing people in Kensington to have an open air market and not treat them the same way we treated the people during the crack era? Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Birdsong. First, I believe that criminal restitution on behalf of the city of Philadelphia is due to the Move movement, everybody involved, everybody descended of that. You dropped napalm on innocent people, that's a crime. You guys are murderers. You owe them that restitution. I also feel, I also feel that that forensics lab, while you guys are working on it and voting on it, you better vote for it because the city needs it. Everybody that's been killing people needs to be held accountable, so do the cops that have been killing people, they will be held accountable by it too. So get it done, stop talking about it and do it. All power to the people. Also, the last thing that I'm going to say, bill 250444, those signs that talk about the data, the crash data and the victims of vehicular homicides and things like that, you need signs to talk about how a 77-year-old can't do Uber in the city without worrying about getting shot. You need signs to talk about how a 64-year-old woman can't walk down King Sessin without having to worry about getting shot, because you give $211 for advances and for raises for people to work in this building, but only 27 million to stop violent crimes. That's the signs you need to put up. That's the truth, right? You need to stop focusing on yourselves and focus on the people. What you need a raise for? All power to the people. Only the people.
Obonahagans, you're proposing a resolution to remember the 1985 government bombing of Move, but this isn't a, something to remember, it's something to outlaw. This was state-sponsored act of terror against citizens under the protection of the 13th Amendment. It was a badge of slavery, and instead of outlawing it, you offer us reflection and remembrance. That is not justice. This is cowardice. I introduced the Philly 13th Amendment bill to give this body the constitutional power to define and eliminate the badges, vestiges, and incidents of slavery. You ignored it. Worse, this council orchestrated the deconstruction of the reparations task force that Gauthier herself proposed. So don't insult us with the symbolic resolutions. Your job is not to reflect, it's to repair. To the American freedmen of this council, your inaction disgraces the legacy of those who died so you could sit there. You don't get to say never again until you make it illegal for it never to happen again. Obonahagans, unseated council president, over and out.
Chair recognizes councilmember Mark Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I was recorded as being excused today. I like to be recorded as present, and we'll be voting on all bills and resolutions.
Duly noted. Thank you very much, Councilmember Squilla. Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
David Kushner.
My name is David Kushner. Amongst the many hats I wear, I'm a chaplain for the Police Department, and I also am the chair of the Public Safety Committee within the mayor's office for faith-based and interfaith affairs. But here today, I'm a private citizen in support of bill 240581 to honor party chair and former congressman Bob Brady, who has never been shy about speaking with moral clarity and displaying true leadership. The despicable and bigoted anti-Semitic incident this past weekend is something that each of you in this body should be outraged about and speaking up about. This esteemed body has always rightfully spoken up with moral clarity when such incidents have happened locally in the past to any of our diverse communities in this great city. Many of you have reached out privately to myself or other faith leaders within the Jewish community to express your support and condemnation of this incident, and thank you for that. But privately isn't enough, it needs to be public. Today, I ask each and every one of you to, at bare minimum, speak with moral clarity by saying during your individual closing remarks today that antisemitism and bigotry of any kind is not welcome in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you for your time. God bless each one of you and God bless the city of Philadelphia.
Council president, there are no further names for public comment.
As there are no more public comments today, we will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars. Will a clerk please read the title of resolution number 250428?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2407, 2409, 2411, 2413, 2415, 2439, 2441, 2443, 2445, and 2447 North Sixth Street located in the Seventh Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes councilwoman Kessi Lizada for motion regarding resolution number 250428.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded that the resolution number 250428 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will a clerk please read the title of resolution number 250429?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to disposal of 166 West Cumberland Street and 2537 Mutter Street located in the Seventh Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes councilwoman Kessi Lizada for motion regarding resolution number 250429.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded, the resolution number 250429 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will a clerk please read the title of resolution number 250477?
A resolution declaring May 13th, 2025, the 40th anniversary of the Move bombing as a day of reflection and remembrance in the city of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes councilwoman Jamie Gauthier for motion regarding resolution number 250447.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for adoption of the resolution, I ask that we observe a moment of silence for the victims who lost their lives in the Move bombing 40 years ago on Tuesday. Neta Africa, age 12. Tree Africa, age 14. Phil Africa, age 12. Delisha Africa, age 12. Tomaso Africa, age 9. John Africa. Conrad Africa. Raymond Africa. Frank Africa. Rhonda Africa. And Teresa Africa.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has the moving property seconded, the resolution number 250447 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Let me go out here. You want a standing moment of silence?
Yes, please.
Will a clerk please read the title of resolution number 250448?
A resolution authorizing the renaming of the 600 block of Palace Street in West Philadelphia to Crawley Way in honor of Ms. Carrie Shelton Crawley for her lifelong dedication to community service and leadership.
The chair recognizes councilwoman Jamie Gauthier for motion regarding resolution number 250448.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property seconded, the resolution number 250448 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will a clerk please read the title of resolution number 250451?
A resolution renaming the 5300 block of Gerard Avenue to Barrister's Way in honor of the Barristers Association of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes councilmember Jones for motion regarding resolution number 250451.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is co-introduced by Member Young. I move for the adoption.
It has the moving property seconded, the resolution number 250045 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will a clerk please read the title of bill number 250065?
An ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulations of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by revising Chapter 9-4100 entitled Promoting Healthy Families and Workplaces, Chapter 9-4300 entitled Wage Theft Complaints, and Chapter 9-4500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Protection for Domestic Workers by adding new chapters entitled Protecting Victims of Retaliation and Enforcement of Worker Protection Ordinances. To add and revise definitions, remove provisions related to wage theft coordinator, add requirements and remedies related to written contracts, meal times and breaks, leave time, contract termination, and other protections for domestic workers established for claims of retaliation under above referenced chapters and Chapter 9-4700 of the Philadelphia Code wrongful discharge from parking employment, the elements of proofs and procedures, remedies and penalties for enforcement, authorize creation of a worker justice fund for victims of retaliation, add requirements for employer record keeping and provision of notice of employee rights under above referenced chapters and Chapter 9-4700, revise and clarify procedures and remedies, penalties associated with administrative and civil enforcement under above referenced chapters and Chapter 9-4700, provide for annual reporting to council on enforcement of the city workers' protection laws, including information regarding noncompliant employers, authorize revocation of city licenses and contracts awarded to employers found in violation of the city's worker protection laws, authorize visa and deferred action certification on behalf of immigrant workers, and make related technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill, having been read on two different days, the question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson... Councilmember Gilmore Richardson was aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Congratulations, Member Brooks. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240581?
An ordinance formally renaming the Overbrook Park Branch Library located at 7422 Haverford Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19151, as the Robert A. Brady Library to honor the dedication and service of former United States Congressman.
All right. Good, y'all. Thank you. It's cool. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240581?
An ordinance formally renaming the Overbrook Park Branch Library located at 7422 Haverford Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19151, as the Robert A. Brady Library to honor the dedication and service of former United States Congressman and Chair of the Philadelphia Democratic Party, the Honorable Robert A. Brady.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson was aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
I proudly say aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240750?
An ordinance renaming and designating the property commonly referred to as Wooderview Recreation Center located at 5826 McMahon Street as the Donna Reed Miller Recreation Center in the City of Philadelphia.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson's aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250067?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania a perpetual right and easement on, over, and across a certain tract of land at the intersection of Southampton Road and Roosevelt Boulevard for roadway and related improvements under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson is aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250068?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Streets Commissioner on behalf of the city to own and maintain a bridge to be constructed by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PennDOT, to carry Byberry Road over certain railroad tracks between Evan Street and Worthington Road and placing said bridge carrying Byberry Road on the city plan pursuant to the terms of an agreement between the city and PennDOT, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson's aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250149?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee title or lesser real estate interest, including a leasehold estate, for all or a portion of the premises bounded by State Road, the Pennyback Creek, the Delaware River, and former Hartel Avenue to enter into a lease or sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development at said premises for the development of a facility, to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Pade for the development of the facility, and to take title to the completed facility from Pade, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson is aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Will the chief clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250323?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development for use by the city of the premises located at 4101 Market Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson was aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 240665-AA?
An ordinance amending Title X of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new chapter concerning vehicular mobile service providers and providing for penalties, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Uh, Council President, can I just say a few words before the vote, or?
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Before this vote, I just want to say that I'm extremely proud to express my strong support for Mayor Parker, Councilwoman Lozada, and the Kingsington Caucus today for their bold leadership. I just want to briefly say that this legislation is well-balanced. It allows for treatment to be taking place in Kingsington, but it also protects the quality of life of the neighbors in Kingsington. This is something that has been afforded to residents of the Ninth District and many other districts across the city where they did not have to endure what Kingsington has had to endure for decades. All the residents of Kingsington are asking for is for a sense of serenity and tranquility and just a decent quality of life. And what this bill does, it says that you can do your services, but you can't do it in front of our children, and you can't do it on our porch and our steps. So do your services, but don't do it at the backs of our residents who have to suffer through it every day. So I want to thank, and lastly I want to say is this, and I'll be done, is that I think Kessie Lozada has endured a lot, listening to a lot of residents around this issue, and she has found a way to be as balanced as possible while protecting the residents of Kingsington. But what I have to say is that I also think she's very generous, because I know the people of our district of the Ninth, there would be no mobile services whatsoever if that happened in our area. The mere fact that she's allowing for this to happen is showing her generosity and her balanced nature when it comes to this. So with that being said, Council President, I vote aye on this particular bill.
So council will be at ease. So we allow both sides on every issue to come, get their public comment. So I know we got supporters, pro and con, on this particular time. I'm just going to ask this refrain from the booing and yelling, let's just let it vote and go from there. Everybody had ample amount of time all last week to come down there and see how they feel, ample amount of time all this today to come down and see how they feel. I'm just saying respectful to the institution and the level of decorum, and so, chief clerk, please call the next person.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson was aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Nay.
Councilmember Young, I mean, Councilmember Lozada.
For the residents and the children of Kingsington and Harrogate, aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Nay.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are thirteen, the nays are three. The bill passes. Will the chief clerk please call Bill Number 250123? Please read.
An ordinance amending Section 6-503 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Licenses and Permits to Provide for the Suspension of Licenses for Businesses Not in Compliance with Applicable State Regulations and/or Whose Physical Layout Significantly Diffs from the Originally Approved Floor Plan, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson was aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will a clerk please read the title of Bill Number 250151?
An ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by revising Chapter 9-4400 entitled Responsible Business Operations to add the sale of tobacco in violation of 18 PACS Section 6305 to the list of nuisance behaviors under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Will the chief clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson was aye. Councilmember Gautier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember Squiller.
Aye.
Councilmember Bass.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero, majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a chief clerk, Liz McCollum, please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the life and legacy of Congressman Dwight Evans on the occasion of his seventy first birthday and declaring May sixteenth twenty twenty five as Dwight Evans Day in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Council Member Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips for motion on the resolution to honor and acknowledge the first African American Chairman of the Appropriations Committee in the General Assembly of Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Council President. Certainly a mentor and a leader among many and a giant. For Dwight Evans, West Oak Lane, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring journalist Chuck Stone for his posthumous special citation for the Pulitzer Prize Board for his role as the Philadelphia Daily News's first black columnist, his trailblazing coverage of the civil rights movement, and his position as co-founder of the National Association of Black Journalists introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion on the resolution on my behalf.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, which was introduced on your behalf, I introduce, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating May fifth to ninth twenty twenty five as Black Teacher Appreciation Week in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating George Lane, Brandon Chu, and Denise George for their prestigious honor of receiving the Gates Scholarship, a distinguished recognition that is awarded to three hundred students every year out of nearly one hundred thousand introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to say thank you to the teachers and support systems that came down here to support those young people today as well as their parents. Some are actually still here, stayed through all this session to make sure that this resolution get passed. So with great enthusiasm, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Najemli Tamala Anderson for over twenty years of teaching and being named Philadelphia Citizen Twenty Twenty Five Educator of the Year introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Kensington to hold a hearing to examine how chronic trauma from exposure to the opioid crisis impacts children's emotional, mental, and behavioral health in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia and to explore tools, services, and programs to support these youth introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lozada for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing, congratulating, and celebrating the Clara Barton School on the distinguished occasion of its one hundred year anniversary commemorating a century of early childhood academic excellence introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Lozada for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Stephen J. Harmelin Esquire introduced by Councilmember Young.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of myself and Councilmember Cindy Bass, I move for its adoption.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Reverend Gus Roman, a faithful servant of both the gospel and the people, for his legacy of uplifting Philadelphians and for his unwavering commitment to civil rights locally and abroad introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, in partnership with Deputy Whip, Bass, move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution proclaiming May twenty twenty five as National Tennis Month introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing May twenty twenty five as ALS Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution that was co-introduced with Councilmember Driscoll.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution proclaiming May twenty twenty five to be American Stroke Month in Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a move and property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
There are no further resolutions in my possession, Council President.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Council President, I am so proud of this council for passing the Power Act today. This legislation will protect over seventy-five thou- seven hundred and fifty thousand Philadelphia workers from retaliation, and it will make our Department of Labor more proactive, more transparent, more responsive to the needs of everyday workers in our city. Over the past few months, as our federal government has dismantled the Department of Labor and stripped away workers' right at the national level, many cities are either keeping quiet or scrambling to respond. But here in our city, Philadelphia, we are leading the way by strengthening our local labor department and passing the first of its kind legislation to protect and enforce workers' rights at the local level. This is what it looks like for a city's government to step up and lead at a time of a national crisis. I want to say thank you to my colleagues who co-sponsored the Power Act and to my Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson and her staff for their leadership as we ironed out the final amendments during last month's hearing. Thank you to Councilmember Harity as well, who has been a true advocate for workers and incredibly helpful from the start of the success of this legislation. I'm looking forward to working with leadership in our Department of Labor over the coming months to ensure the successful implementation of the Power Act. I also want to take a minute and acknowledge George Porter, who has been interning in my office over the last several months. His last day is today, and we're going to miss him. We wish him the best as he continues to organize at Penn on behalf of graduate students fighting for their voices to be heard and the next step he takes in his career at SEIU Local six six eight. He is going to make a fantastic lawyer. Thank you so much, George, and I'll be looking forward to seeing what you do next.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I co-introduced a resolution with member Cindy Bass honoring the life and legacy of the Reverend Gus Roman, a faithful servant of both the gospel and the people. The Reverend Gus Roman, for those that don't know, left a lasting legacy here in the city of Philadelphia. He brought many career opportunities to marginalized people and fought for unity among divided groups. His life was a testament to faith-driven public service. He led multiple congregations, mentored young pastors, centered his ministry around community empowerment and racial unity, and played a leadership role in expanding the Opportunities Industrialization Centers, OIC, which grew to over eighty chapters nationwide and twelve in Africa. He also welcomed Nelson Mandela, President Nelson Mandela, to Zion Baptist Church there on North Broad back in ninety-four, where Mandela addressed the end of apartheid and called for racial justice. He worked tirelessly to end the scourge of apartheid in South Africa alongside the legendary lion of Zion, Reverend Leon Sullivan. The Reverend Roman passed away this past May the fourth and is survived by his wife, Eunice Matthews, five children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. He was not only a spiritual leader, but a civic visionary. His commitment to justice, equity, and unity continues to inspire our city, and whether through job training programs or mentorship or ministry, the Reverend Roman worked to ensure that the most marginalized Philadelphians had access to opportunity and dignity. So as we honor his legacy, I invite you to see it as an invitation to recommit ourselves to the values that he lived by. And as we honor the legacy of a man who dedicated his life to uplifting the marginalized and expanding opportunity, it is only fitting that we now turn our attention to the Power Act, a piece of legislation rooted in those very same values of justice, equity, and dignity for working people. The Power Act is proof that when we fight, we win, that when we organize, we win. This is a victory for working people and a signal that Philadelphia stands again on the side of labor and the working class. Lastly, I'd like to ask my amazing legislative intern if she's in the room at all. She may not be. There she is. Hazel, stand up for a brief second. Today is also Hazel's last day with us in our little office, but she'll be spending her summer with Community Legal Services, continuing her commitment to justice and to public service. As a legislative intern, Hazel has contributed so much for the team, researching policy, drafting resolutions, supporting legislative initiatives. Many of us who have been members on this floor know how invaluable some of those really, really good interns can be, and her passion for justice and dedication to public service has made a real impact in this office, and our little team is grateful. My little self is also immensely grateful. Thank you, Hazel. Thank you for your work, for everything that you've done. We wish you the best of luck, and you will be missed, but our doors will always be open to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any speeches on behalf of the majority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to briefly note that next week, we are going to be honoring a giant and Dwight Evans for a renaming of the West Oak Lane Library as the Dwight Evans Library of West Oak Lane. I'm inviting all of those in the city of Philadelphia to attend. It's going to be a great festivity. It's going to be Saturday, May seventeenth, from eleven AM to one PM at the two thousand East Washington Lane, Philadelphia, PA, one nine one three eight. There will be free giveaways and food and so forth. So looking forward to, you know, seeing everybody at the West Oak Lane Library. Just really briefly, you know, people said, why, what made you, what inspired you to do this? Honestly, the city, our district deserves to have history shown. You know, I just wanted young people, adults alike, to drive around our district and see monuments where they can say, this represents some level of meaning and history, from schools being built, commercial corridors, to quality life issues. Dwight Evans was on top of all of that in West Oak Lane, and he deserves our recognition. I also ask the chair review that, you know, next week I will not be present. This will be my first session I'm missing from Philadelphia City Council. It was very difficult because, you know, as a kid, I took perfect attendance very seriously. I always won those awards. I was one of those kids, definitely. But I will be graduating from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, so, so, so I will not be here sadly next Thursday. So I just want to let you all know why I won't be here. Thank you all so much with the PhD in African American Studies. The dissertation was focused on the African American church and whether or not it's still viable in social, economic, and political life in the city of Philadelphia. So thank you, Council President.
Congratulations. Councilman McCutcheon Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank all of my colleagues that checked in yesterday through texts, and some came down, particularly Kathy Gilmore Richardson. First responders every day get up in the morning and don't know how their day will end. Yesterday, we were at the Living Flame Memorial for Police and Fire, where we honored people who gave the ultimate sacrifice to public service by giving their lives. One hour later, we were responding to a police officer, twenty-six-year-old out of the nineteenth district, who had been shot. He volunteered to go to the nineteenth. Because he was twenty-six years old, he figured he could relate better to young people from Overbrook High School. Thousands, tens of thousands of students go to school every day doing the right thing, going to school. Many of them were in this chamber today, being recognized for academics and sports, doing the right thing. Tens of thousands of them will be graduating this month, going on to colleges, serving the military to get jobs, doing the right thing. There is a very few that are doing the most. And throughout my time, and I know many of you can relate, there's always been after-school fights. Let's write a passage for some. But when parents, grown-ups, in a misplaced, misguided way want to come up and get their kids back, it's like pouring gasoline on a fire, because now that child that might have walked away is encouraged by their adult. When that parent who now sees their kid, they're excited and want to demonstrate false love, don't even know half of the time who their teacher's first name is in biology. But yet they want to come up and express this kind of support, or lack thereof really, for their kids. It is unacceptable. A week ago, ironically, when Superintendent was here, you remember us giving him a resolution that we passed to talk about violence among children, violence among scholars, to teachers, but most importantly, violence among parents that come to school in a negative way. We then met with the school of discipline to talk about some of the problems with that. We asked, we want to find out why that kid that's acting out in class, throwing those chairs. Member Thomas, what trauma did they experience? And we want to give them counseling and guidance. But those two kids are impeding upon the education of the twenty-eight other kids in the class. It is time, it is past time that we take a hard look at that progression of discipline and also reaction to violence in our schools. Some days, this job is fun. Like when we're on a parade float, it's a wonderful day, right? Worst day you can ever have is going up to a hospital to find out if one of our first responders is going to make it through that day. We can do more, we should do more, to protect them in doing their jobs. They didn't sign up for that part. Teachers didn't sign up to be assaulted. They should not have to go after school and look at the parking lot to see if that parent is actually going to, quote, empty the clip in them. This is not a single problem. The kind of point it is all of our responsibilities to deal with. And let's pray for the officer. Let's pray for the students that were traumatized. And I want to thank Catherine Gilmore Richardson, who bought food and support for the parents and the parents of the officer, but also the police officers at the nineteenth. Let's keep them in our prayers, but more importantly, keep them in our deeds. Turn it into a verb. Let's do something about it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Jones, and thank you for your leadership, and you've been speaking on this issue consistently. The chair recognizes Councilman Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I echo what my colleague just expressed about our first responders, and I extend my heartfelt wishes for a swift and full recovery to the injured officer. And most importantly, I express my deepest gratitude to all members of Philadelphia Police Department for their unwavering service. Let us stand unified in the support of our first responders and remain committed to building a safer, more compassionate Philadelphia for all. I also just wanted to comment very briefly on the three resolutions that I introduced today and that all of you voted for, which really speaks to the importance of community health, access, and awareness during the month of May. The first resolution was proclaiming May twenty twenty five as National Tennis Month, and with support of my colleagues, Councilmembers Squilla and Bass, we acknowledged the incredible growth of tennis across the country with more than twenty-five million Americans participating last year alone. Tennis offers not only physical exercise, but also emotional resilience, social connection, and joy. We recognize the work of USTA in expanding access to the sport, especially through local programs that serve residents of all ages and abilities. I also co-introduced a resolution with Councilmember Driscoll to recognize May as ALS Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia. ALS is a devastating disease that robs individuals of their ability to walk, talk, and breathe, often within few years of diagnosis. We uplifted the work of ALS United Mid-Atlantic and honored the courage of patients and caregivers in our communities. We also acknowledged the caregivers, also acknowledged the urgent need for continued research and better treatments, especially given the high prevalence of ALS among military veterans. Lastly, I introduced a resolution to proclaim May as American Stroke Month. Stroke remains one of the leading causes of death and long-term disability in our nation, and many strokes are preventable with awareness, access, and to care. We emphasize the importance of recognizing the warning signs, the face drooping, the arm weakness, the speech difficulty, and the critical need to call nine-one-one immediately. We also brought attention to the disparities that put Black Americans and women at greater risk. Each of these resolutions reflects our commitment to health equity and well-being of every Philadelphian. Whether through sport, science, or public education, we have a responsibility to inform, support, and empower our communities. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. She recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gautier.
Thank you, Council President. May thirteenth nineteen eighty-five is the darkest day in our city's modern history. Police officers fired over ten thousand rounds of ammunition in less than an hour and a half, one hundred and eleven bullets per minute at a row home they knew had children inside. When this assault didn't achieve its desired effect, city officials then made the unconscionable decision to drop a bomb on the row home, the first, only, and hopefully last time in American history that a police force bombed those they were sworn to protect and serve. The resulting explosion sparked a fire, which authorities let burn, not calling firefighters to the scene until nearly an hour later. By then, it was too late. Five children and six adults lay dead, and two full city blocks burned to the ground, leaving two hundred fifty innocent bystanders homeless. The memory of watching Cobb's Creek go up in flames is permanently seared into my mind. Just like if you asked someone where they were when the first plane hit the Twin Towers, every Philadelphian alive at the time can tell you exactly what they were doing the day the sixty-two-hundred block of Osage Avenue went up in flames. It was not until five years It was not until five years ago, 35 years later, that City Council formally apologized on behalf of the city of Philadelphia for bombing a city block. I'm grateful to my colleagues who were here at that time for recognizing that it is vital that we reflect on this painful moment in our history. We need to fully reckon with what happened that day, and we need to understand it and remember it so that we do not ever repeat it. The story about the move bombing is still being written. It is up to us to decide its ending. If we take the easy way out and let this tragedy fade from memory, we doom ourselves to a future where those who come after us repeat the mistakes Philly's leaders made 40 years ago. Instead, we must keep the infamy of the move bombing alive and fight for reconciliation and justice so that none of our constituents hear the whistle of a bomb being dropped on their home ever again. That's why I'm glad that today, City Council enacted my resolution declaring May 13, 2025, the 40th anniversary of the move bombing, as a day of reflection and remembrance. Thank you to my co-sponsors, Councilmembers Phillips, Gilmore Richardson, Landau, Lizada, Brooks, Harity, O'Rourke, Driscoll, and Ahmad. I also want to thank members of the public who came here today to keep this story alive. Most especially, Mike Africa Jr., his mother and father, and other members of the Africa family, and residents from across Philadelphia who still remember the horrors they witnessed 40 years ago. Over the next week, I urge us to reflect on the move bombing, the events that caused our predecessors to believe that this excessive use of force was not just acceptable, but necessary, the trauma that radiated throughout Philadelphia as a result of this devastating decision, and how we can help our communities to heal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. She recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to remind my colleagues that are on the Streets and Services Committee. We have a hearing at 2:00 PM following council. It's going to be a very quick hearing. Today, Mr. President, I want to acknowledge a couple of interns that are in my office. They weren't present today because they're at their graduation. Melvin Romero Tabar and Kendall Swirls. They are graduates from Temple University today with their degrees in community development. And so they're going to hopefully go on to do great things in this city. I also want to acknowledge my digital media intern, Summer Jenkins. Today is her last day in my office as well. And she helped definitely get my social media game up a little bit more than where it was before. Want to remind folks that we have a job fair on Saturday, May 10, our Youth and Young Adult Job Fair, which is co-sponsored by the National Center for Urban Solutions, Community College of Philadelphia, P.A. Career Link, and Career Connected Learning, PHL. It is from 11:00 to 2:00 PM this Saturday at Community College of Philadelphia, 1700 Spring Garden. All the youth and young adults out there looking for opportunities, please come out. There will be job opportunities, workforce development opportunities, and also educational opportunities here for you as well. On Saturday, May 17, from 11:00 AM to 5:30 PM, in partnership with Park de Broad Arts and Business District, myself, State Senator Sharif Street, and State Representative Keith Harris, we will be producing the Gerard Avenue Festival. So please come on out throughout that day and enjoy live entertainment, fun, and family-friendly activities. And I also want to acknowledge and thank Dr. President Fry of Temple University for his swift action this weekend. We have to acknowledge that hate is not tolerated anywhere. And so what President Fry did in acting swiftly in suspending those Temple University students who openly displayed hate in our city, you know, he showed that that won't be tolerated at my alma mater, so I'm proud of that. We have to continue to show that hate cannot be tolerated anywhere in our city. And with that, Mr. President, I thank you for allowing me to indulge us today.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilman Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. Today was a good day. Thanks to the hard work of Councilwoman Brooks, we passed a power act showing once again that this City Council, no matter Democrat, Republican, working families, we can all come together when the issue matters. So I thank everyone. This is a great step for people who've had no rights for so long to now be able to have guidelines that say you do have rights. So, and then, my district councilwoman, Ketsi Lizada. I want to thank you for being a leader. I want to thank you as a resident of the 7th Council-Matic District. As somebody in recovery, I know what it means to be addicted, to not have a choice. But I also know that in the 7th Council-Matic District, we have people coming out and, you know, they give clothes and food to the homeless addicts, and that's a good thing. But we have kids in the 7th Council-Matic District who are not eating. We have seniors in the 7th Council-Matic District that have food insecurities. This is real. It's real for that neighborhood. It's real for that community. You know, I get wanting to help people. I've devoted my whole adult life to service. But I know that we can service those addicts who are having difficulties out there on the street without disrupting the neighborhood. We're not saying that the work cannot be done. We're saying that you have to do it in a place that's not going to affect our children. A place where the kids can't sit there and watch at the cop of their street while they're trying to play. That's not right. You know, I was angry last week with the comments that some of our people made that were coming out here. And I get it, and they believe, and they fight. But they got to understand that we have 134,000 residents that live within a block from Kensington Avenue, who have been shut-ins, who have not been out of their house. Kids, I have 100 and something kids on my block. If I got five out playing, that's a lot. It shouldn't be like that. It wasn't like that when I first moved in here. That's another thing that makes me angry, when people say that this has been going on for so long. It's been a poor, low-income neighborhood for a long time. That's true. We've had issues. That is also true. We've had drug dealers. That is also true. But not like this, dude. I equate it to New Jack City. We all remember that movie, right? Instead of taking under a high rise, they took over a whole neighborhood, and we let them. And now, people are mad at my district councilperson because she's stepping up and saying enough's enough. Our kids matter just as much as every other kid in any other district. Our seniors matter just as much as any other seniors in any other district. Councilman Ketsi Lizada, I am proud of you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you from me. Thank you from my family. Thank you from my neighbors. We love you.
It's real. Chair recognizes Councilman Rulanda.
Thank you, Council President. Just want a couple of minutes to, first of all, thank Kendra Brooks for her heavy lift of the power act. It is a fantastic piece of legislation that will protect so many workers. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Thomas for introducing a resolution to recognize our incredible Black educators for Black Teacher Appreciation Day. This annual day is an opportunity for us to celebrate the work of these educators and amplify the need for even more Black educators in our schools. Thank you for leading our young people. I'd also like to speak about a bill that passed in the Pennsylvania Senate this week in what is being called the Save Women's Sports Act. This bill will ban transgender youth from participating in school sports consistent with their gender identity. This is an attack on our children in Philadelphia and across the state. It amplifies the transphobic rhetoric that we're seeing at the federal level, encouraging a culture of discrimination and exclusion among children at a time when they should be focused on learning and building stronger relationships with each other. If these legislators really want to save women's sports, they might address the lack of equitable resources for the sports teams or the disproportionate funding. If they cared about our children, they might address the high rates of suicide, anxiety, and depression of LGBTQ+ youth. If they cared about education, they would safeguard our public school facilities across the state and the funding to ensure they are safe, healthy, and thriving. And finally, I want to take a minute, as the only Jewish member of City Council, to acknowledge the horrific Barstool Violent Anti-Semitic Language Act that took place. I'm somebody who not only speaks out when there's a harm against any community that I recognize. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the statement I always hear surrounding this, that we should denounce antisemitism and all other forms of hate or bigotry. So I, for one, want to name those. And I will start with denouncing Islamophobia. I will also denounce racism, especially anti-Blackness, xenophobia, and any acts of hate that are coming against anybody in Philadelphia based on their actual or perceived place of national origin, transphobia, homophobia, ableism, and misogyny. If we are going to speak up against any acts of hate, we must loudly and clearly speak up and name all acts of hate at all times. If we don't all do this together, it will continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ketsi Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to be brief today because I am extremely emotional. What we saw here today were not advocates. Those were real people. Those are real children who live day and night with the activity that occurs in their community. If we don't respond to what is happening in the Kensington community, those children will become a part of the systems that we say are negative. The prison population system, the mental health system, the dropout system, the depressed systems, all of those systems that we say that we work hard to prevent our residents from coming in contact with or becoming a part of, are all of those things that those children will become a part of if we don't do something. If we don't do something now. Things will change in Kensington. This legislation is just the beginning of difficult decisions that we are going to have to make in order to take our community back, in order to make our community a healthy one. I want to thank the members of this body who stood with the residents of Kensington, who throughout the week were encouraging and supportive of me. I want to thank the Kensington Caucus because we agreed on day one that we were going to stick together to fight for our districts. And they have stood up to that task. I want to thank all of those individuals who have prayed for me, over me, and for my community. Because it is through those prayers that we get through some of these difficult decisions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Very briefly, I just want to take a moment to say congrats to my councilman, Dr. Anthony Phillips, on achieving his degree and going to graduation. You're making the right decision. I can tell you that, Dr. Phillips. So please, go ahead. We won't charge it to your attendance. I also want to say congratulations to my sister, Councilmember Brooks, on passing some significant legislation today that I know was a heavy lift. Congratulations to my colleague, Councilmember Ketsi Lizada. I know this was a very emotional couple of weeks from you, getting calls and emails and text messages from so many people. And even in the midst of me talking to Councilmember Lizada, one of the things that she said to me that really touched my heart was, "This is for the children of Kensington. This is not about me. This is not about folks who don't live in my community. I'm doing this for the children of Kensington." And she's basically asking us to give her a chance, right? Give me a chance to try to do this my way. And I do think you deserve that chance. And I commend you for your resilience and your tenacity. This week, and thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Rulandau. In collaboration, we introduced Black Teacher Appreciation Resolution to honor Black educators and Black male teachers in the city of Philadelphia. And we had a bunch of students here today that really are reflective of the work that Black men are doing, Black teachers are doing, and Black educators are doing. And so I want to commend all of those folks who fall in that category. As a former teacher myself, I know that it's a very difficult and daunting task. And we really want you to know that we appreciate you, especially looking at not just the Palumbo students we honor, or the Audere students we honor, but also keeping the Overbrook family in our hearts. Because for those of us who are in the Education Committee, we know that the last two school years, we've seen a significant increase as it relates to violence between parents and students. I'm going to say that again. Over the last two school years, we've seen a significant increase as it relates to violence, specifically between parents and students. I don't know what's in the water, Council President. I don't know what's going on. But that has to come to a stop. And I'm prepared to work with the members of the Education Committee, along with my district council members, to be able to make sure that that's not a thing anymore. Last but not least, as I close out, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young. I actually met with the president of Temple this week related to the Intergovernmental Task Force that this body actually passed. And we just happened to meet at a time when he was dealing with a lot because of the behavior of some students there. And so I want to commend the president of Temple, President Fry, for his quick and accurate action as it relates to that unfortunate incident. And I want to say thank you to Councilmember Landau because I think that your comments today were perfect, right? We cannot condone hate of any kind to any demographic, to any group of people. And I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about what it is that we need to do when it comes to condemning all type of hate here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Council President. In the words of Councilmember Jim Harity, "Today is a good day." So thank you.
Thank you.
Or Ice Cube. Sorry, Council President.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, the chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. I move that council stands adjourned until Thursday, May 15, 2025 at 10:00 AM.
It has a moving property second. The council stands adjourned until Thursday, May 15, 2025 at 10:00 AM. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and Happy Mother's Day. The motion carries, and Happy Mother's Day.